Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will please come to order with the clerk call the roll to establish a quorum.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ashby.
Here.
Councilmember Laloe. Is online. We'll come back to him. Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Councilmember Shanir.
Here.
Mayor Protem Gera.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Vang.
Here.
Councilmember Laloe.
Here.
And Mayor Steinberg.
I am here. Councilmember Jennings, would you please lead us in the land acknowledgement and the pledge of allegiance?
If everyone would rise for the opening acknowledgement in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands. To the original people of this land, the Nesean people, the Southern Maidu, the Valley and Plains Miwok, the Patwin-Wuton people, and the people of the Wilton Rancheria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe. May we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather together today in the act of practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous people's history, contribution, and lives. Thank you. If you'll join me in the pledge of allegiance, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again, Councilmember Jennings. Good afternoon, members. Before we get to the consent calendar, let me just make a couple of announcements here. I want to make sure Vice Mayor Ashby sort of texted me the same that items 32 and 33, which are really important items relating to diversity, deserve some significant time. And I'm worried that with the city budget and with the ordinance that everyone will get tired. It happens, and it won't get the attention they deserve. So I want to continue these two items, please, tonight. We've already talked to the staff so that we can agendize these and make sure that they get the right kind of attention, all right? The other thing is I do want to, after the consent calendar, here item 34, the access to healthcare facilities item first. And then we will get to the couple of other public hearings, and then we'll get to the budget, I think, in a more than reasonable hour, and then that will conclude our our meeting for the long day, okay? Is that all right? So when we do the consent calendar, please, I would like a motion then to continue items 32 and 33 as part of that motion, if you don't mind.
So moved, Mayor, and thank you for doing that. I really appreciate it. I'll second it.
No problem. But let's get, let's do the consent calendar. Well, okay, let's just continue the items first. Go ahead. Let's call the roll on continuing the items.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a read to the record. I was asked by councilmembers to pull item eight off the consent calendar and not vote on that this evening. It will be brought back probably the end of July.
Okay.
But I do have a read into the record for item number one, the city clerk's log of councilmember pending requests. I'd like to add the following to that log. At the May 24 meeting, councilmember Laloe asked for report back on the two sites from the comprehensive siting plan that are no longer feasible, and would like the city manager to return with information on the savings from those two sites and agendize a council discussion on reinvesting the allocation of funds for those two sites back into District Two for reinvestment in the district, residents, and businesses that are suffering from coming out of the COVID era.
Okay, very, very, very good. So that'll be it, okay? Are there other questions or comments on the consent calendar?
Here, I have my hand up. I just want to make clear. So the motion now includes item eight because I know that was a request to defer.
No, she said, the city clerk said we're going to continue that item.
Oh, okay. So we don't need a motion for that at this time?
That's correct.
Okay.
It's just, it's just continued, okay?
Okay, thank you. Then I would like to pull item two for just a quick comment from me and a separate vote, please.
Separate vote. Okay.
Mayor, I'd like to pull the council log number one and take a separate vote on item one on the log.
Okay, so anybody, any, okay, so now here's what we have. Item eight is continued without a vote. I would like a motion, just at least a restated motion, I'm sorry. For the consent calendar, items three through seven, nine through 28, and include in that motion, please, a continuance of items 32 and 33. Who's going to make that motion?
So moved.
Mayor, I'm happy to move, remove that, and I retain my second from Councilmember Vang.
Okay, very good. Whoever moved it, that's great. Okay, it's all good. Okay, let's, is there public testimony on the consent items other than?
Mayor, I'm sorry, just one last thing. On the items that you are continuing, the diversity and equity items, I just, I have one question because this list, our number one list here, is getting a little long, and I don't, I there's an item on here that I think is supposed to be the right item, but it may be overlaid with a few others. The last time that we had a robust discussion as a council around these diversity and equity numbers, we asked city staff, city management staff, not auditor staff, to help us put in place some benchmarks. We haven't seen those numbers come back for us to select. So I'd just like when we bring this item back for the city manager's office to also bring us some suggested benchmarks or parameters for benchmarks so that we can set some goals that we can hold these annual audits to for progress purposes. And I think that request is interwoven into a few different items on our follow-up log, but really, it would be pretty appropriate, I think, to have that conversation when this audit comes back, if we can do so, if it can be coordinated. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. So that'll be a request when that comes back. Thank you. Okay. Is there public testimony on the consent calendar, Madam Clerk?
Mayor, I have no handkerchiefs to make public comment on the consent calendar.
Okay, so the consent calendar, with the exception of items one, two, and eight, has been moved, and a continuance of items 32 and 33 with the direction by Vice Mayor Ashby. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Shanir?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Gera?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. All right, let's go back. That passes. Then let's go back. We'll start with Councilmember Valenzuela with item two.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make a brief comment that I support pretty much all of the appointments on this item, but I do oppose, and I did voices during PMPE, so just wanted to reiterate it today, but before I vote no, that I don't support removing Barry Boyd from the S H R A Commission. It means that we don't have anybody from District Eight on that commission. I do appreciate that he serves on the Planning Commission as well, but I just think his voice and his community's perspective is really important. So for that reason, I just want the opportunity to vote no on item two. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Let's take a motion on item two then, please. Anyone want to move item two?
Mayor, I'm happy to move the item. I just wanted to note for the record that we all really like Mr. Boyd, but he currently serves on more than one board and commission. So when, you know, we're trying to spread the love across lots of folks, we, we kept him intact on a different board or commission that he was on. And while I agree he has a lot to offer, many of these committees and commissions, we put another very capable person on there. So I appreciate Mr. Boyd and his service. He's a wonderful individual and somebody that Councilmember Carr recruited directly. So happy for his time and service there, but also grateful that he'll continue in service on another board, on the Planning Commission, actually. So happy to move the item, Mayor.
Second?
Moved in second, and please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
No.
Councilmember Shanir?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Gera?
No.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
No.
Mayor Steinberg?
Aye. All right, that passes seven to two. Councilmember.
Six-three.
Six-three.
Six-three, Mayor.
Six-three, I apologize. Okay. Councilmember Harris on item number one.
Yeah, so on request by Councilmember Valenzuela to take staff time and look at a proposal for cannabis consumption lounges, we skirted this topic at Law and Ledge, decided, I thought collectively, that it wasn't really quite ready for prime time. I particularly don't think that it is ready to be considered or to put staff time towards until we have a sobriety test for cannabis. So I would like to have a separate vote on this as to whether or not we should devote staff resources to further this.
On this item, on this item or the entire item one? So how do you want to do this, Council?
No, just, just number one on item one. So just, just that one aspect of the council log.
Mayor, if I could, if I could make a suggestion on this, if we, why don't we go ahead, if it's all right with Councilmember Valenzuela, we'll put it on the law at Law and Ledge as a first hearing to see if there's momentum to move it forward at that point. And if it is, then staff can get involved, but it wouldn't require any staff work prior to that.
If it's okay, Chair, I'd love for the council to vote on this because we did discuss it at Law and Ledge, and I think I was the only one who was interested. So I'm just looking to take a pulse check of the rest of the council. If there's interest in exploring, we'll explore, and if there's not, then, then we won't. So I'd love to comment on this. Thank you.
And again, just for the public and for colleagues, we're not voting necessarily on the merits of the issue. It's whether or not, you know, the council members should get the benefit of the staff's time and expertise to explore an idea. That's the way I look at it. And, you know, it's got to be reasonable, right, in terms of the amount of time. All right, so why don't then, why don't we take item one, sub-one, and have Councilmember Valenzuela move that, which I'm sure she would?
I would. I see some of my colleagues have their hands up though to make comment.
Okay, we will.
On the merits of staff exploring this, but I'm happy.
Okay, wait, we'll talk about it. That's, we'll be here all night. Is there, is there, is there a second on moving Councilmember Valenzuela's motion on item one, sub-one, to have staff explore the cannabis lounge issues?
I'm moving.
Councilmember Vang, seconds. Okay.
Okay.
So then let's hear from colleagues on, I guess, this or any other part of item one. Councilmember, Mayor Protem Gera.
Thank you. I was just going to agree with Councilmember Shanir here. The conversation at Law and Ledge is about the number of issues that we have to worry about, work on, not worry about on the cannabis issue. And the reason this was pushed off is because we have to prioritize a lot of other issues before this. So my, my recommendation, again, would be to support the issue of putting it on the log so we're tracking every aspect of how we work through. Now, I don't know if I necessarily agree with Councilmember Harris, just because who knows when the technology or how all that works, but it is part of, I think there are more things than just the sobriety question, which is a valid question, but that we have to work on, than just taking this on. Now, here's my gut feeling, Councilmember Valenzuela. If this fails, you're sending a signal to the staff also that this isn't the priority at all. And I think the conversation at Law and Ledge was, we've got enough other things that we want to prioritize when we take this on. So that, that's only my, my point of view here, but and, and I'll be voting, in this case, if we move forward in this, I'll be voting against it.
Yes, could I ask a technical question? Because this is something that I just don't totally understand. I mean, what's the difference between putting this on the Law and Ledge log and putting this on the council log? Because I think both are giving staff direction to look into something, and I guess I saw this as an opportunity to take a pulse check, but maybe I'm misunderstanding how these two logs function because I thought this is how we did any staff direction. We had to come to council and, and put this on the council log.
I would say, Councilwoman, that there are multiple times where we have brought issues to Law and Ledge prior to staff spending time working on them to see if we want them to move forward. I think when you go to council, I guess, is you would need a staff report on it and require some, unless there's something different on that, and I would ask the clerk maybe to weigh in on that. This, this, this whole process is a little bit new.
Yeah. Yeah, and I guess, I mean, staff has already put together kind of a staff report on this because it was included in our materials during the cannabis hearings, as they're called. So I guess I don't see how this, that would be too functionally different, but I appreciate the point. But yeah, I'd still like to call the question because if the majority of the council isn't even interested in talking about it today, then I don't really see us spending too much time on this at this stage if, if it's not even going to go past, hey, let's think about it for this stage. So happy to still call the question.
Okay, Vice Mayor, on this, on this question of the, of the log, its
Yeah.
multifaceted implications and ramifications?
Um, sometimes doing these meetings on Zoom is a little bit hard. Because I want to whisper to my colleague, Councilmember Valenzuela, that Councilmember Shanir is offering her a victory, about to lose a vote. But if you agreed with Councilmember Shanir, then you could keep your conversation going at Law and Ledge and potentially see this moving forward. He really offered you the medium ground that could keep, you know, the conversation alive. But if you move your motion forward today, there's not going to be votes there. And I do think it's a conversation worth happening. I just think you, you have, we have to prioritize staff time. And so, you know, if, if Councilmember Gera made a motion or Councilmember Shanir, I would support that for a discussion at Law and Ledge to flush things out a little bit. But I don't think you're going to have votes to put it in line in front of other cannabis issues that people have been asking about for several years that, that committee's working their way through. So I guess that's my two cents, Mayor. I
Thank you. You know, Councilmember Valenzuela has the right to make a motion, it's whatever she's, but I think any dialogue, advice, problem solving, it's all good. Councilmember Laloe?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. You know, I, I agree with Councilmember Valenzuela on this. I think we have a lot of individuals out there that are just in a stage of, state of limbo. And some of these are core applicants. And I, I think expediting the process is what's needed, and in, in fact, I'd like to see if I can add, add one additional motion to this, and that is i- if the council would agree as far as zoning and licenses, rather than this going to a planning committee, if we can just identify the distances from the cannabis industry to other aspects of it and just make licenses available, I think we come up with a nice distance and zoning so we can get away from this, you know, every five years, we're going to make this many licenses available. And for this to go to the planning department, again, I'm not, I'm 100% against that because we're, we're the, the governing body that we should decide. But I agree with Councilmember Valenzuela that to get a vote on this and just try to push this train forward a little bit faster. We have a lot of core applicants that are out there, and they just don't know what's going to happen tomorrow, and I don't think that's fair. So I'm, I'm.
You're a yes. You're a yes vote. Okay, Councilmember Harris?
Yeah, Mayor, you know, the purpose of the council log was really just to get the temperature of the council on whether they wanted to devote staff resources to an issue, not to debate them or adjudicate or take these issues prematurely. I want to offer a substitute motion that this comes back to Law and Ledge. And then we can discuss it there and promote it to council. So that's my substitute motion.
So this, I mean, that's fair. Everything's fair. It's just, it's a little, this is all about whether or not we're giving staff direction to work on this. So whether it's voted for staff to work on at Law and Ledge or City Council, it just is very circular because then Councilmember Valenzuela will want to bring it back here because, and put it on the log because Law and Ledge will have said no. So it's just, you're right. I'm just saying, I would give the council member her vote and, and probably the votes, I don't think are there. They might be, I don't know. Yeah. Is there a second on Councilmember Harris's substitute motion?
I said I would second the motion, so I guess I'll hold that in place, but I do feel bad for Katie.
Well, I mean, sorry to be laughing. I just, I think this is, and maybe I'm just missing something, but I think this conversation is a little silly. You know, if we were to say, yes, we want staff to look at this, then the next step would be that staff would look at this at Law and Ledge. And if Law and Ledge decided not to move something forward, it wouldn't come back. And if we changed it, it would come back changed. So functionally, this is what I'm struggling with here is that I'm not asking to jump the line in front of the zoning changes. I'm not asking to kick anybody out of the way when it comes to other projects. We're just trying to figure out if this is something you'd like Law and Ledge to look at. Now, if the answer is no, I don't see what Law and Ledge looking at it and bringing it back is necessarily going to change if folks out the gate are opposed to even the very concept of consumption lounges. But that's literally all I'm asking right now is, do you want us to look at this concept at Law and Ledge, which is the exact same motion that was just made. So I'm happy voting for either motion. I just want to make clear that I don't really understand the difference between the two motions, I guess. But I'm happy to support Councilmember Harris's motion. It's procedural. That makes my colleagues more comfortable. Totally fine with that. Just looking for a pulse check here.
So Councilmember Shanir, maybe you could be an ultimate help here, which is, I know you only have X number of months left on the council. But if there are other items, which it appears there are related to cannabis that are a priority for the members and for staff, is there a way you could, we could actually determine that?
Well, why don't, yeah, why don't we do this? If we send it back to Law and Ledge, I will make a commitment to the Councilwoman that we will try to format it and do kind of the groundwork to be able to send it to the committee. There are a couple of cities in the state Hollywood or West Hollywood, LA, and one or two others that have done this. We could put together, work with staff to put together a staff report and then bring it back to the council.
Okay. Yes on the, so it's yes on the Harris motion, please call the roll.
But, but with, with, you have my commitment that it will come back to council, but let us do the preliminary work so we don't spend an hour at council getting to the point where we could get to on our own. How's that? Katie, does that work?
That's exactly how I thought it would work. I'm happy to support it. I wasn't asking for it to bypass Law and Ledge.
No, 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 I understand. It's fine.
Yes.
Jay, you cannot commit to bringing it back to council from.
I can commit to, I can commit to what I would do, and I think if it's a two-two vote, then it comes back to council.
Yeah, I mean, it's just procedural.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Eric, did you have another comment on this issue?
No, I was just going to suggest a substitute motion to get rid of the council log, but again, that's just my, that's my point of view here.
Well, for, not for tonight. Okay, let's call the roll on Jeff's, Jeff's substitute motion, please. I think Councilmember Valenzuela and Harris are in accord by the end of this. So they're both asking for a yes vote. Go ahead.
So to reiterate, that motion was by Councilmember Harris, a second by Vice Mayor Ashby. That was to approve the city clerk's log of councilmember pending requests, moving item one to the Law and Ledge log, and adding the item that I read into the record. Vice Mayor Ashby?
Excellent. Thank you. You just filled it out a little bit, which I appreciate. Good. That's the motion.
Thank you, Vice, Vice Mayor Ashby.
Can we, Mr. Mayor, can we add a timeline to that, or is that premature as far as Law and Ledge?
It's premature because Jay, Jay said he'll work on it in good faith and.
We will, we will get to it as soon as we have space on the log. I'll have to talk to Consuelo about that. Yes.
Okay.
It will be sooner rather than later.
Yeah. Go, go. Call the roll, please, before somebody else raises their hand. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Ashby?
Yes.
Council, Councilmember Laloe?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Shanir?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Gera?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Um, we may have to get rid of this log. Yes, yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. Okay, members, we're off to a fine start this evening. Let's now take up, the consent calendar is finished. Let's take up item 34, as I promised, and then we will go back to 29, 30, and 31. So item 34.
Yes, good evening, Mayor.
Yes, thank you.
This bypassed both the council log and Law and Ledge and directed to come to the council on March 22 as an urgency measure to prepare an ordinance in many chapter 12.96 of the Sacramento City Code relating to access to healthcare facilities in order to increase protections for patients by prohibiting individuals from harassing, intimidating, or obstructing persons seeking access to such facilities. The reason for the urgency in front of the council was because of the national discourse recently that was upended as a result of the disclosure of the draft majority opinion of the United States Supreme Court in the case of Dobbs v. Jackson's Women Health. This case implicated the highly controversial issue of reproductive health care services. And since the draft opinion was released, there's been significant, and in some cases, very emotional protests by thousands of people, both in the state of California throughout the country, and even here in the city of Sacramento. The, this ordinance in front of you aims to prevent the obstruction, harassment, or intimidation of persons entering and exiting healthcare facilities while still preserving the fundamental constitutional rights of others to assemble peacefully and express opinions on matters of public concern. The recommendations presented in this report are consistent with and strike an appropriate combination between the city council's established findings that access to healthcare services is a matter of critical importance to individuals and all citizens of the city of Sacramento, that efforts to deter, to prevent individuals from seeking and obtaining healthcare services by means including harassment are contrary to the interests of individuals and the people of Sacramento, and that all people have a constitutional right to assemble peaceably and express opinions on matters of public concern. With that, Mayor, I turn it over to you and the rest of the council for discussion.
Thank you very, very much. Do we have any representatives from any of the healthcare facilities that are?
Yes, Mayor, I believe we have Kindalaya and Lauren from Planned Parenthood Online.
Please, I would like to.
Or there's Jessica, sorry, nevermind.
I would like to give the Planned Parenthood representatives an opportunity to speak, not as part of public comment, but essentially as the sponsors of this ordinance.
Hello, good evening, everyone. Let me see if I can, oh, there it is. And let me go ahead and turn down the volume on our baby monitor. I am so thankful to be here this evening. I also have Dr. Hamilton on the line. Oh, there you are. Looks like everyone is ready to go. I will go ahead and share my screen here. I don't see a button to do that. I don't know if our city clerk is able to give me access for the presentation.
There's a green button on the very bottom of your screen.
Oh, I see. Thank you very much. Very much appreciate that. And everyone can see all right now?
Yes.
Wonderful. I have a brief presentation, and then Dr. Hamilton will go ahead and give, share her experience, and then our VP of Public Affairs, Lauren Babo, will go ahead and answer any questions that the council may have. And I just wanted to take a moment to thank Councilmember Valenzuela and Mayor Steinberg for bringing this to the agenda. I really appreciate your leadership in bringing this item up for a vote. So I'll go ahead and move on. Much like our city attorney shared, we have already been experiencing the impact of the Supreme Court leak. Folks have been protesting in front of our buildings and harassing our response centers and our patients and our staff. And we've already seen an increase since last year, and I'll go ahead and share that with you all, in addition to our three health centers in the city. Here, we have the little red tag, so you all have an idea of where they are located. This is a kind of what you see here is the increase over the last several years of our incidences. This is almost to, this is year-to-date, so this is almost to the full 2021. So we've already seen an increase in, in what we're experiencing for this year so far. And it's increased by 25%, and it's happening at least 33 out of 37 of our facilities. And it's increased by twenty-five percent, and it's, uh, happening at least thirty-three out of thirty-seven of our facilities. Where our B Street is one of the most, uh, we have our top four here, one, two, three, four, uh, listed here. So we have B Street, which is here in Sacramento. We have, um, Hayward, North Stockton, and Fulton Street. Um, but as you see here, B Street is, um, one of the top ones in Sacramento where, um, we're having a lot of these incidences, incidents, uh, not just in Sacramento, but across, um, our communities and our regions. Um, and I will move on to our protester activity. Um, as of, uh, year 2022, this year, we've had six thousand five hundred and forty-two protesters that have been reported, uh, at our health centers. And as I shared earlier, this is a twenty-five percent increase as of last year. And, um, we have about nineteen out of thirty-four a month that protests, which is a seventeen, seven percent increase over last year. Um, and just to share a little bit about, um, our protesters in B Street, which is our, one of our Sacramento center, health centers. Protesters are using loudspeakers to amplify sound and standing, um, on scaffolding and so that they can see over our privacy fencing. They loudly preach. They play crying baby noises and antagonize our patients, um, and their partners and our staff. And, um, two of the main protesters have been cited for the, for using the loudspeaker. But I was just there today, and they're out there today. They're still at it. They're still with their mega speaker, uh, amplified sound, um, with their microphone. Um, and I'll, I'll let, uh, Dr. Hamilton speak more to that, um, at this next slide. So I'll go ahead and turn it over. Thank you so much for your time. Just wanted to share a little bit of our statistics here, and I know you have a busy agenda, so we're not gonna, I'm not gonna take any of your, more of your time. I see, um, Councilmember Garrett has a question, so I'll go ahead and let.
No, no, it's okay. I, I got, I got it here. Don't worry about it. Thank you.
Okay, 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 okay.
No, no, no. Let's turn it over to Dr. Hamilton for a moment.
Thank you so much, Mayor.
Very helpful presentation. Thank you. Dr. Hamilton?
Hi, I hope you all can hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Thank you, council members, for bringing this item to the agenda. My name is Jessica Hamilton, and I'm the Associate Medical Director of Abortion Services for Planned Parenthood Marmontay. And I'm here at our B Street Health Center today. I regularly provide care here. I usually park about two blocks or so from the health center, and as I approach, I can always hear a man yelling over a loudspeaker, unless it's raining. Sometimes he is not here if it's raining. As I hear him, my heart always starts to beat faster. Sometimes I'm tempted to put on headphones to drown out the harassment and his intimidating words. I enter the health center usually wearing sunglasses, street clothes, and a face mask. Without fail, as I approach the parking lot, the man towering above me on a six-foot podium is calling me out by name. Often, he's wearing a pink shirt to resemble a Planned Parenthood supporter to confuse our patients. I hear him yelling by name, "Dr. Hamilton, don't go in there. Do not spend your day being a murderer. You are better than this." Sometimes the protesters act as my personal agent, offering to find me other jobs. Today, I was told that I have no excuse for the work that I do. Every day, there is an attempt to shame us. Every day, we're harassed. Our lab couriers who come to and from our health centers are harassed for picking up serum samples. One of our nurses told me today that as she was walking into our health center, she was told over a loudspeaker that she is a worse human being than the shooter at Uvalde Elementary School who murdered nineteen children and two teachers. And she was just coming back from maternity leave. I can only imagine how our patients feel. They're entering a health center for a procedure that is unknown to them. And as anyone who accesses medical care knows, this can be a very anxiety-provoking experience, let alone the often, often emotionally charged decision of having an abortion. Today, I had three individual patients ask me with pain looks in their face, "Are they always out there?" Referring to the protesters. As I walk through our recovery area, which is located in the front of the building, to check on patients who are recovering from procedures or sedation, I can continue to hear him over the loudspeaker shouting, bullying, intimidating. Sometimes we hear sounds of babies crying over the loudspeaker. And I just feel like as we're considering a post-bro world where one point four million people at a state will find their nearest abortion provider in California, the least we can do is spare them this experience of harassment and intimidation. And I want to thank you all again for considering this today.
Thank you so much, Dr. Hamilton, and I'm so sorry for what you and your patients have to go through. It's wrong. All right, let's hear from members of the public, um, first, and then we'll hear from my colleagues and we'll hopefully take, have a motion in a, in a second.
Thank you, Mayor. Our first speaker is Johnny Questus.
How many speakers do we have in the item, Madam Clerk?
I currently have five.
Okay.
Hello, Johnny Questus here. Can you hear me okay?
You can.
Yes.
Hi, thanks for hearing me. Um, so my name is Johnny Questus. I'm a licensed clinical social worker and a former, um, child welfare social worker. Uh, particularly, I worked with high-risk youth. Um, some of those were, um, commercially sexually exploited children, or, um, CSEC for short. Um, and I currently operate like a private practice, um, primarily work with members of the LGBTQ community. And, uh, I appreciate this opportunity to speak on this. I think this is a great, um, this is extensively, um, important to, uh, youth, um, who are being trafficked, who are, you know, um, still in the life, not ready to, to gather life and receive support, as well as youth who are looking for support, for medical support. Typically, when we work with youth and child welfare who are being trafficked, um, getting consistent healthcare has been, uh, struggled. And programs like Planned Parenthood have been, um, essential for ensuring the youth have, um, the care that they provide. So, uh, just want to appreciate this, uh, opportunity to speak in support of this, um, ordinance revision, um, and as well as, uh, to speak on, you know, in support of, uh, the care for, you know, children and child welfare, seeking, um, reproductive health services, as well as, uh, members of the LGBTQ community, um, speaking, um, services such as these as well. Uh, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Sheri Grevin.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Uh, my name is Sheri Grevin, and I'm a Sacramento resident and Planned Parenthood Marmontay employee. I'm joining today in support of item thirty-four and want to thank Councilmember Valenzuela and Mayor Steinberg for your steadfast leadership on this. I've worked in Sacramento at PPMM for six years and have experienced firsthand what Dr. Hamilton described. I won't go into it further because she did such a beautiful, um, job, um, speaking on behalf of her team. But I just want to uplift all of our patients and providers, and I'm so relieved, um, with this ordinance that our patients and providers will have a basic and fundamental right to privacy. Please vote to pass item thirty-four and support access to reproductive healthcare. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Becca Horwitz.
Hello, Sacramento City Council. I am a community organizer with Planned Parenthood Marmontay and a former patient. I used Planned Parenthood Marmontay services as a teenager, and I really just can't imagine how I would have felt if there were ever protesters yelling at me, towering over me in my face as I entered the health center as a teenager who was just trying to do the right thing to protect myself and my partner at the time. I've had friends who have not been so lucky, who've not been able to avoid that kind of harassment and continue to talk about how traumatizing that experience was for them. As mentioned in this presentation, there have been several protester incidents, and, um, we can really only expect these incidents to increase as abortion and reproductive healthcare continue to be attacked by our national institutions. So the city of Sacramento really has the opportunity to make change on the ground that will deeply improve the experiences of so many residents. So with that, of course, I strongly urge the council to adopt this buffer zone ordinance to secure patients' right to their own safety, privacy, and also to ensure that people can access and provide care without the fear of intimidation or harassment. Both patients and providers deserve to feel safe accessing healthcare and going to work. And quite frankly, they have the right to. So thank you, Councilmember Valenzuela and Mayor Steinberg for your leadership on this matter.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Andrea San Miguel. Andrea San Miguel. Andrea?
Can you hear me now?
We can.
Okay, excellent. Hi, yes. Andrea San Miguel. Um, I use she/her pronouns, and I'm a resident of District Five in the city of Sacramento. Um, as a few of you know on the line, my day job is also working for a Planned Parenthood organization, but I am calling today, um, just as a Sacramento constituent and a former patient. Um, long before my day job had anything to do with reproductive health, I was also a patient at three different affiliates within the state of California, including Marmontay, um, including the B Street location that is being discussed. And when I was a patient there obtaining birth control, I did not have to encounter protesters harassing me, but I know very well that many of the patients, volunteers, and staff there today do and, um, hope that it was well-heard, uh, the experiences that they've had that have been getting worse year after year recently. Um, and when I was a patient at those health locations, it was no one's business why I was there. And, um, definitely hope everyone here can support, um, increasing and easing access to what is, uh, protected right of way, um, into basic healthcare services. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Elizabeth Wells.
Hi there, can you hear me?
We can.
Uh, thank you, um, everybody for, for holding us up. And yes, my name is Elizabeth, and I'm a constituent as well as a former legislative staffer, as well as, and, uh, former Planned Parenthood staffer, calling, do call in, you know, strong support of this measure. I've been aware, I knew all of the ongoing vitriol and hate that anti-abortion protesters can skew, but I've also seen it personally when I was interning at the B Street Health Center, the way that they use manipulative materials and hate speech to attempt to defer patients from accessing the compassionate, nonjudgmental, high-quality health services that Planned Parenthood offers. Providers like those at Planned Parenthood find creative ways to drown out the protesters and create a supportive environment, but now more than ever, we're looking for, um, elected officials at every level to support, uh, providers on the front line. So thank you for considering this measure.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Delia Tiempo. Delia Tiempo? Next speaker is Ashan Balaji.
Uh, I'm here. Yeah, and my name's Eshaun, uh, just for future reference. But, um, yeah, so I wanted to, um, just mention how, um, you know, I have a partner who works at Marmontay, and, you know, she has complained recently about, I guess within the past few months, how these protesters have really, you know, just done anything they can to, you know, start kind of overstepping these boundaries. You know, they've taken very, very predatory measures. Um, you know, they started trying to track people down using license plates, using, um, you know, trying to see their name tags. You know, it's just very, overall very insidious. And, you know, I am in support of this ordinance because, you know, I think that just with other cases, like in Knoxville, there is a Planned Parenthood that was, um, you know, set ablaze. And in Wyoming, I believe that there was another similar incident. So I just, you know, don't want anything like that to happen over here, um, just for public safety.
Thank you for your comments. Delia Tiempo? Delia, if you'll unmute. Mayor, it appears they have no more speakers.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, thank you to the members of the public who called in as well. Let me turn it over to my colleagues. Uh, I, I'm gonna want to make a comment. I'm gonna want to hear from my colleagues first. Councilmember Valenzuela, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. And, um, thank you, city attorney and your team for your very quick work on, on this really important ordinance that started with conversations between the mayor's office and my office with Planned Parenthood about incidents at the B Street side and with the police department about different issues that were being experienced, um, lack of clarity in, in the law that this ordinance is seeking to, to address. So I'd love to, to bring into this Captain Hanson, who some of you may know as the Central City, um, captain. I talk to him multiple times a day and over the weekend, um, all hours of the day. But, um, on this issue, Captain, I'm hoping you might speak briefly to what you've been hearing in terms of anticipated, um, activity or protest that we might be expecting in the capital city, um, here in the coming weeks.
Yeah, so since we heard that the Roe v. Wade leak came out a little over a month ago, we have had information that there's likely going to be civil demonstrations, either in support or against whatever the opinion may render. Some of those are very, um, open to being courteous, civil demonstrations just showing of support or opposition too. However, some groups have called for disobedient behavior to include vandalism, graffiti, and sometimes violence. So that's information that's shared nationwide. It's not specific to Sacramento region, but it is what we are included on.
Thank you, Captain. Yeah, I think, um, something that Lauren and Candelaria said on one of our first calls when we were talking about this issue is that what's gonna happen if this decision moves forward and abortion rights are restricted in other states is that protesters that have been spending time in these other states are gonna start coming and focusing on the states that have protected abortion access and healthcare, reproductive healthcare access. And so we have every reason to believe, based on what they are seeing, not just in Sacramento, but across California, that this is gonna start becoming an escalating challenge. We've got regular folks there, but some of the stories that they shared, which I won't ask them to share more here about what they've seen in Fresno and some other cities, it's, it's really chilling. Um, and it's gonna have a chilling effect on people seeking care, and it's important that we clarify the law, um, now, knowing what we know about what's already happening, but also what we're seeing in terms of a sense of urgency as to what may come as soon as in the next week or two. Um, so really appreciate you, city attorney and the mayor's office, for your, um, partnership on this endeavor. And would like to move the item, um, as an urgency measure here tonight, and, um, hope my colleagues will join me in support. Thank you.
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Second by Mayor Pro Tem Geta. Um, you're next, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I also wanted to thank, uh, all of our city team and staff for moving quickly on this and all of the, also the, the workers and volunteers at many of these, uh, health centers, not just Planned Parenthood, but many of the health providers who, uh, are, you know, uh, making sure that there's access to healthcare. And I, um, I think that, uh, some of the things that, uh, we just heard from our police department, where emotions and can escalate, uh, it wasn't too long ago where even in California, I think it might have been in the dust in 2016, um, there was a clinic that was, uh, that was attacked, it was firebombed. And so, you know, what we need to make sure we do is we're providing a health, a safe and healthy space for people seeking access to healthcare. Uh, you know, many of the clinics are, are also the only, uh, place for people who don't have access to healthcare as well. They're providing, uh, resources for folks who are low-income, maybe have language challenges as well. And, uh, in a time when, uh, when someone is in need of healthcare, uh, also having to face, uh, you know, the, the level of, uh, aggression, just trying to get X to the door, uh, is a, is a larger public health crisis for us as well. So the, 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 uh, I think the clarity in this, and I think the, just the position that the city's taking, a stronger voice in this is an important one. Uh, and I do want to thank my colleague, um, you know, Councilman Rousewell and the mayor for making sure that we moved on this quickly, and thank you to our city team for that. But we just can't forget that this isn't just that, this isn't, these issues haven't occurred in other parts of the country. They, it can happen here and, uh, and California, um, as diverse as the state is, also has, uh, some sentiments that can be, uh, also violent. And we want to make sure that we protect access to healthcare, uh, here for all. So, uh, proud to support the measure, and thank you again for everyone in here who's taken the time to, uh, to work on this issue.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Ashby.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, gosh, this is such an emotional issue and easy support, but so hard to talk about. I personally vacillate between feeling completely devastated by Roe v. Wade and then other times just furious and then determined. And so, um, I'm so sorry, Dr. Hamilton, that that, that you deal with that every day on your way into work and. on your way into work and, and Andrea San Miguel and, and all the employees, you know. Candelaria, every, everyone. You're dealing with it every day. And yet you're here to advocate for the patients, not even yourselves. The very least that we can do is create this buffer zone to try to keep as many people safe as possible and you know, I love what Andrea San Miguel said that when she went there for birth control, it was nobody's business why she was even going there. It remains nobody's business why anyone is going there. And if you ever look at the breakdown of Planned Parenthood services, they do so many important healthcare things for so many populations. So for folks to sit out front fixate on one very traumatic issue and then scream about it at every person that goes anywhere near the facility is just, it's beyond outrageous. And so I just want to say, Susanna, are you still on there?
I am, Councilmember. I'm present, Mayor.
You know what? I'm so glad we chose you because in moments like this, when you were speaking, I know you well enough to know how important this issue is to you. And I'm just so grateful that you're our city attorney so that you could put the words together to really make a difference. And I think a lot of times in moments like this when the Supreme Court or something happens in Washington DC, we feel like we can't do anything. And this is an opportunity for us to actually do something. And I'm really grateful for that opportunity. And Susanna, thanks for putting all those words together that I know will actually have a direct impact on how we can help people, not just in our city, but people who come to our city looking for support and help. You know, I'm, I'm really proud to be here today and to get to vote on this item. And I'm really proud of our city attorney and the people who, who do good work in Sacramento and just just go to work every day trying to help people, but especially all those young women out there who have to make tough, tough choices. The last thing they need is some old guy with a bullhorn standing on a ladder screaming at them. And I'm, I'm grateful we're gonna be able to do something about that today. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lulowee.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mayor. First and foremost, I'm a strong, strong yes on this. I definitely want to thank Dr. Hamilton. Thank you so much for being who you are and thank you so much for helping so many individuals. You know, it's really sad that in 2022, we have individuals that give themselves the right and they, they hide like weak individuals behind our First Amendment rights, which is again, something that I, I, I'm a big supporter of. But, and it's really sad that, you know, this is what, what happens when religion and politics try to get commingled. They got, religion has no business being involved in politics. You know, a patient at your facility should walk into such a calm environment because as a patient, regardless of why you're going in there, I mean, I'm looking at myself as a patient. You know, it's so important when I go to my doctor's office that I feel good and positive and I know there's, there's, there's the sunlight at the end of the tunnel. But again, I just hope people that are so into this ridiculous conversation to just think that if you're into religion, there are so many things that are happening in our world. There are so many acts of cruelty and violence that's happening in the world. And what would hope that you would have, that if you're gonna use your free time, use it to be more productive rather than being a bully at a health facility. So, Dr. Hamilton, again, thank you so much. I'm grateful to our mayor and our, our, our city attorney to be able to put something together this fast. I'm a hundred percent in support of this. And if we could make it even more aggressive to set the tone out there, again, I'll be a big yes vote on that too. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Lulowee. Councilmember Vang.
Thanks, Mayor.
You have a little sound problem, Councilmember Vang.
Thank you, Dr. Hamilton, for your steadfast leadership and sharing your story and also the stories of your staff and your patient. I also want to say thank you to all the callers who called in that shared their lived experiences with all of us as well. And just mad props to Susanna and our city staff for working so quickly to bring this item back to us to vote on. I'm proud of the ordinance so that we can prevent the harassment and intimidation that's happening right here in our city. I think for me, this isn't an issue of free speech. This is really about the safety of patients and our Sacramento residents. I know that this wouldn't be tolerated at any of the major healthcare facilities when you're entering the building to seek any kind of help, right? And we should expect the same standard at even our our smaller community clinics or our community clinics that do incredible work serving our underserved community. And so really proud to support this ordinance with my colleagues because we're doing everything we can to protect patients and still preserving our constitutional right for folks to express their opinions. I think this is the thing to do and just really proud of our city and proud of our mayor and Councilwoman Valenzuela for bringing this item for us to vote on. And I'm a, I'm a strong yes, yes for this ordinance. And thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Vang. Councilmember Shanir.
Thanks, Mayor. I just, I'm in the same place as all of my colleagues on this. I want to thank the councilwoman and mayor for bringing this forward and thank the folks from Planned Parenthood for coming and testifying. I'm a strong yes. And it's a sad day when we have to do this. But it's, it's a good day that we can be something, as the vice mayor said. Thank you.
Good. Thank you so much. Councilmember Harris and then Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll keep it very short. Planned Parenthood Marmontay is an outstanding organization and every woman in this country, in a free country, should have unfettered access to reproductive healthcare, to all healthcare. And this ordinance should pass. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Jennings.
You're on mute, Mick.
Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. I want to thank Dr. Hamilton for her courage every day in putting up with what she should not have to put up with, but the courage to continue to endure and go in every day to take care of the patients that need her. I want to thank Councilmember Valenzuela and Doc, and our mayor for their leadership on this issue and for making sure the staff has helped us and given us the tools that are necessary to stop this type of harassment and intimidation. And I want to thank each of the callers who called in to voice their voice. I just want to let you know that I stand with you and we stand together to correct wrong and not allow it to thrive. So Mayor, I'm ready to call the question.
Thank you, Councilmember Vang. Just want to make a brief comment myself if I might. I appreciate all the eloquence of my colleagues and a big thank you to our city attorneys, Susanna Alcala Wood, for, you know, really putting together a very fine ordinance and doing it expeditiously because time is of the essence. Really appreciate that. And Dr. Hamilton and all good people at Planned Parenthood, you know, when I think about this, there are many ways to abridge a basic right. And certainly the United States Supreme Court, if they follow through, and we all hope that they will not, overturning Roe v. Wade, in many states, of course, abortion will be illegal. In California, abortion, no matter what, will remain a strong legal right. It's a right to liberty. It's a right to due process. It's a right to privacy. It's a right to reproductive choice. It's a right to abortion. And it is a fundamental right. But this ordinance is so important because it recognizes that there is another way to abridge that fundamental right, even if abortion is legal in California. And that is to harass women and to prevent them from entering a Planned Parenthood clinic. And so this helps uphold and protect that fundamental right that will remain the law of California, thank God. But will ensure that it can actually be upheld in reality. This is an important and proud night for our city council to unanimously pass this ordinance. Let's call the roll, please. You want to calibrate Valenzuela, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, just a quick two comments first. I remember when the opinion got leaked, I was visiting Cuba, doing tours of, I was actually in one of their health centers at the time the news broke and they were appalled because they've had access to free and institutionalized abortions there since the sixties. And they were like, what do you mean? They're gonna take this right away. But I also would be remiss if I didn't mention, a lot of us have mentioned women's access to abortion. And I just want to recognize and respect that there are many people who might need access to reproductive care and abortion that might not identify as women. So with that, Mayor, I just would like to call the roll.
Thank you for the clarity. Thank you. Okay. Let's call the roll, please.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ashby.
Yes.
Councilmember Lulowee.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Councilmember Shanir.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Getta.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Vang.
Yes.
Mayor Steinberg.
Yes, it passes nine to nothing. And it's an urgency ordinance, goes into effect by the city attorney immediately.
Immediately, immediately.
Thank you very much. The law of Sacramento. Thank you. All right, members, let us go back now to the two business improvement items that we have tonight, items twenty-nine and thirty. Let's begin with item twenty-nine, please.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and council members. My name is Seeny Maokasini with the Finance Department. The item before you is the public hearing to approve the annual reports. Love you the assessments for fiscal year 2023 for each of the following business improvement areas, also known as BIAs. And we have the Del Paso Boulevard BIA, Downtown Plaza BIA, Franklin BIA, Boulevard BIA, Oatsack BIA, Stockton Boulevard BIA, and the Sutter BIA. On May seventeenth of this year, council adopted the resolution of attention for the BIAs, setting today's date of June fourteenth as the date for the public hearing. And at this time, staff recommendation is to open up the public hearing. Upon the close of the public hearing, if a majority of protest does not exist, staff recommends adopting the six resolutions contained in the report. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, whose council district? Councilmember Getta?
I am. Mr. Mayor, I'll open the public hearing, but maybe the clerk wants to see if there's any comments from the public.
Mayor, I have no hands raised to make public comment on this item.
Okay, then you can open and close the public hearing and move the item, please.
Then, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll, I'll open and close the public hearing and move the item.
Terrific. All right, let's call the roll, please.
A second, Mayor.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, yes, there needs to be a second. Apologize. I'm still learning the Robert's rules here. It's very, very good.
Keep working at it.
Go.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Ashby.
Yes.
Councilmember Lulowee.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Councilmember Shanir.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Getta.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Vang.
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Yes. All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you. Let's go to item thirty, the Midtown Restaurant Business Improvement District.
Okay, it's me again. I have item number thirty. It's the public hearing for the proposed renewal of the Midtown Restaurant Business Improvement District, and this is for a tenured term. The proposed restaurant district will encompass all restaurant businesses that currently exist around and between the boundaries of the twentieth and twenty-fourth street blocks between J and K blocks. There's a map contained in the council report. The Central Midtown Restaurant District will provide services targeted to increase revenues for the restaurants within the focused areas such as specialty events intended to increase restaurant patrons, enhance service, safety services to increase security patrol, police presence, marketing and promotion in our projects such as lighting improvements to provide ambient lighting on trees, ornamental poles, et cetera. This will help for pedestrian safety. On April twenty-sixth of this year, council approved the resolution of attention to establish, to renew the Central Midtown Restaurant District. At this time, staff is recommending to open the public hearing on the proposed renewal of the Central Midtown Restaurant Business Improvement District. And so it's opened now and would like to take any comments if there's any.
All right, this is Councilmember Valenzuela's district. Councilmember?
Yeah, I, well, I know there's a couple of hands raised, I see, that are important folks in the area, but I will just start by echoing, opening the hearing. I would love to close the hearing and move the item at the appropriate moment and just say how critical the role of Midtown Association is in our thriving central city and that corridor. For those of you who aren't familiar, or maybe live under a rock in the city of Sacramento, it's very popular. It's very highly trafficked, it's very impacted. And I think their role in this space is gonna be integral to ensuring the safety and the well-being and the, and just the amazing Midtown spirit that we all love about those few blocks in our central city. So really excited to support this, Mayor. And I'm happy to make the motion out of public comment.
Okay. Very good, thank you. Let's hear from the members of the public. How many callers do we have signed up?
Thank you, Mayor. I have three callers.
Okay.
First is David Adams.
I really didn't want to talk about this. I want to find out how I can get a, like a, in one of your meetings where I could talk about a couple of items that really affect where I'm at. How do I do that? Anybody? Hello?
I'm sorry, what is your question, sir?
I have a couple of items I want the city to look at. And I need to find out how to, how to, how to like talk a little bit more than two minutes, because it takes me more than two minutes to make you guys understand what the issues are that we're having where I live.
What is your name, sir?
David Adams.
David Adams. So Mr. Adams, Mr. City Manager, is there a name and a number, a live person that Mr. Adams could call tomorrow? And, and have a longer conversation about what he needs help with?
Absolutely. We, we have his name and number. The clerk has it. I'll have my staff reach out to him tomorrow.
Okay, so you're gonna get a call tomorrow, tomorrow morning, I assume, okay?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Next speaker is Carrie Jo.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Carrie Jo Clark and I'm the controller for Lowbrow Beer Hall at Twentieth and K Street. I'm speaking on behalf of the owner and myself. And we wanted to voice our support for the item before you tonight regarding the Midtown Central Restaurant District renewal. Lowbrow has been around for many years, taking steps to make our city more vibrant throughout the launch of events and programming, including this event series on Twentieth street between K and L. Midtown Central has been able to support and uplift our events and programming by reimbursing some costs for event services, communication and social media support and loaning equipment to help us close the streets down for events. Midtown Central was also instrumental in the design and installation of the On Street Ballards on Twentieth Street, which has served as a common patio space for the restaurants between J and K since early 2020 as a result of the pandemic and which allows the Midtown Farmers Market to occur each Saturday. As the district renews, we are excited to continue to build a greater sense of community in this area, connecting the two powerful areas of restaurants on K Street. Thank you so much for your time and I look forward to this being passed.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Kimmy O'Beazette.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council.
Yeah.
I didn't realize we were, we were gonna be, I was gonna be going behind item thirty-four, so feeling a little sheepish. I didn't realize we were, we were going to be, I was going to be going behind item thirty-four, so feeling a little sheepish. Thank you very much for passing that unanimously, and I don't know if Dr. Hamilton's still listening, but thank you for your service to our city and our country. I'm here in my capacity as owner of the Golden Bear Twenty-Fourth and K Streets. I'm calling on behalf of the item before you tonight regarding the Midtown Central District renewal, and of course, to voice my support. I happen to sit as chair of, of that committee. The Golden Bear has been in operation for almost twenty years, serving visitors and residents with a variety of food and beverage options. Since the launch of the Restaurant District in twenty seventeen, the restaurants collectively worked together to bring forward important and dynamic programming to make the stretch of K Street the destination for visitors in Midtown. For the restaurants at Twenty-Fourth and K, we have seen the addition of projects and programming, including LED lighting chandeliers and the tree canopy adjacent to Derby Garden, greater summer programming with the third Thursday event series, Oktoberfest, the Banana Sundays event, and the Cinco de Mayo. And finally, the support to launch the alfresco patio dining program during the pandemic. The pandemic hit the restaurant industry especially hard. Being able to expand the footprint of our site in a safe manner allowed for us to continue to welcome guests in a positive manner and help to ensure our survival. As we look to recovery, the Restaurant District will be just as important to support the further growth of our area. Thank you for your time, and thank you to the city staff who helped make these districts possible.
Thank you, Kimio.
Mayor, I have no more speakers on this item.
All right, thank you very much. This is really an important item. The Midtown is such an important economic driver and center of fun and, and food and entertainment in our, in our city. Councilmember Valenzuela, you want to make the motion here?
Yep, I will. The hearing was already open, so I'll close it and move the item, Mayor. Thank you, Midtown Association, for what you're doing.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor, I'd be happy to second it.
Okay, go ahead. Okay, Councilman Jennings, seconds. Let's call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Ashby.
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Councilmember Shenier.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Geta.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Vang.
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Yes, that passes unanimously. Thank you. We get to our last but very important item of the evening, and that is the adoption of the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget and the capital improvement program. Ms. Combs, you are presenting, as I understand it, you have a brief presentation. We'll get to the public comment and allow the council then to weigh in.
Great, thank you so much, Mayor. All right, can everybody see my presentation all right?
No, Emily.
Well, not yet, Emily.
Okay. Let me try that again.
Okay, there we go.
There we go. Got it. Thank you. All right, so good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'm Emily Combs, your Finance Director, and tonight brings us to the conclusion of the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget process. So following this presentation, I'll be requesting that council adopt the resolution approving both the operating budget as well as our capital improvement plan. So over the past several weeks, we've presented an overview of the budget to both the Budget and Audit Committee and Council, counsel through presentations from fire, police, and youth parks and community enrichment departments. We've also covered changes needed to correct the budget based on timing and some technical corrections. Based on our review, we're recommending the changes you see on this slide as well as on the following slide. In the general fund, council's adoption of the storm drainage property fee in April is expected to generate about two point two million in additional revenue. This is offset by an increase in anticipated expenses for the SURA program to cover the new fee as well as the recently approved increases for the recycling and solid waste user service charges. Under utilities, also related to the storm drainage property fee addition, we're recommending a net increase of sixteen point six million in revenues to support the storm drainage capital program and transfers of expenses from existing utility funds to support the program. We're also recommending some net zero adjustments related to some of our property and business improvement districts or P-Bids, and a small adjustment in the water fund to help support Water Forum. We recently had some organizational changes, and as a result, we're recommending that two violence prevention multi-year projects or MYOPS move from the Office of Violence Prevention to the Police Department. Finally, we have one more to add to the list of proposed changes, and that is in the Fire Department. Fire staff have been working on a plan to try and address overtime associated with vacancies and are proposing to delete three vacant staff aides to partially fund the addition of two fire engineers at our emergency vehicle operator course or EVOC. Fire management has also identified additional positions that will return to the line to further reduce overtime needs. So of the total cost, which is the five hundred and sixty-six thousand you see there, about a hundred and fifty thousand is one time. We're also recommending a transfer from the IDT G EMT Reserve to alleviate any impact on the general fund. We're also recommending some changes to the budget resolution. So based on feedback from council on the May seventeenth budget hearing, we've modified section one point one two of the resolution to end measure U realignment activities at the end of fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. We're also included a new section to allow the use of year-end surplus for two riverfront project ramps that the Office of Innovation and Economic Development applied for. The year-end surplus would be used as the city's required match. And finally, since it's anticipated that the fourth, our program will have sufficient fund balance to cover any foreseeable deficit, we're recommending that the language related to providing general fund resources to cover shortfalls caused by the COVID-nineteen pandemic.
Ms. Combs, we can't hear you.
We've got you back. Try again, Emily.
Okay, I don't know where I left off, though.
You're just about ten seconds, so just.
Okay.
It's okay, just go back a little bit.
Okay, so during the hearings, we received about twenty-one questions or requests for information. Some responses or statuses have been provided as part of the supplemental material included in your agenda packet today. Any remaining items will be added to the council follow-up log following budget adoption. As part of that supplemental material, we received a couple requested budget changes from council during those hearings. What you see on this slide are those funding requests. At the May thirty-first Budget and Audit Committee meeting, the committee voted to forward the budget in CIP to council for adoption. At the same time, the committee requested a review of capital projects in District Six to determine if any funding could be reallocated to fund Oki Park Open Space Improvement. That review is included as part of your packet as supplemental budget information item number twenty-one. We also received direction to add the following two items to the proposed budget, Mayfong Park and two hundred and fifty thousand in ongoing funding to restore the annual allocation of one million for the Fair Free Transit for Youth Program. The one million was previously approved by council but was reduced during the pandemic due to a decrease in ridership. We currently anticipate that youth ridership will increase, so we've included the full one million in our general fund measure U forecast. So we've updated the general measure U fund forecast based on the changes we're recommending as part of this report, which again includes the restoration of funding for Fair Free Transit for Youth in Mayfong Park. It does not include any reallocation of funding for Oki Park. The revised general measure U forecast also includes our updated revenues and expenditures, and compared to what was presented as part of the proposed budget, this shows a slightly favorable or improved forecast, meaning our ending available fund balance is improved over the proposed forecast. And this is largely due to incorporation of the storm drainage property fee, which was discussed earlier. Finally, we've included a forecast for the new Storm Drainage Property Fee Fund. I do want to point out that the adoption of the storm drainage fee did affect other funds such as the solid waste fund, water, and wastewater funds, as this fee can now cover certain operating expenses and projects in those funds. So those revised fund forecasts have been included as part of the staff report. So that concludes my presentation this evening, and again, I just want to take a moment to thank the council, our city manager, our assistant city manager, Lani Milstein, executive staff, and all the staff that worked so hard to pull this budget together. It's an enormous team effort, and I'm incredibly grateful for the level of commitment all over the city, and of course, I'd like to thank our small but fierce budget team and budget manager, Martha Alcentizo, for all their long hours pulling this together. And with that, my staff, department, and budget staff would be happy to take any questions.
Well, thank you, and let me pass on the thanks as well from a grateful mayor and city council to your, your very fierce team here for working so hard over so many months to help us get to this place. Really appreciate it. So, Madam Clerk, do we have public testimony?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, our first speaker is Ken Spence.
How many again? Please tell us how many.
Currently have five.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Ken Spence, and I'm a senior policy advisor with Next Gen California based here in Sacramento. We're a nonprofit that fights for progressive policies and programs to address environmental, social, racial, and economic inequities, and to increase opportunity for all Californians. I'm calling in support of the proposed budget change for the Oki Park Open Space Improvements. For the past year or so, I've been working with the coalition of organizations and individuals to help develop a community-based vision for the vacant utility corridor just south of Oki Park. Following several community input sessions and a robust visiting process, I can't overstate how excited I am by the potential of this project to positively impact the community. The urban farm that we've included in this project will be managed by our partner NorCal Resist and would directly address food and security issues in the community. While the native grasses and flowering plants that we planted on the site would improve biodiversity, reduce fire risk, mitigate climate change impacts, and generally beautify the space. The series of walking trails and biking trails will enable community members to enjoy all of these features, and the entire site represents a wonderful opportunity for educational enrichment in the form of programming such as walking field trips. This budget change, if approved, will represent a huge step forward in bringing this project to fruition as we actively seek additional state, federal, and philanthropic funding. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Karen Suwicke.
Hi, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Karen Shreya. I'm a resident of District Four, and I'm also the deputy director of a nonprofit called Insight Garden Program. We work with currently incarcerated people to co-design and maintain drought-tolerant native plant and permaculture gardens inside of California state prisons. We also work with people who are coming out of prisons, offering peer mentorship and a holistic approach to reentry support. And through our transformative program, participants are empowered to become food justice leaders, environmental stewards, urban gardeners, and role models within their community. We've been working with the team of local groups on the Oki Park Open Space Project for the past year, and we've done a lot of outreach to the local community, and we've heard directly from residents that the majority, roughly seventy-five percent of those we connected with, have a strong desire to support the community's most vulnerable populations, which include people impacted by incarceration, immigrants and asylum seekers, and at-risk youth. A greater vision of the space is the intentional design of programs that will support our vulnerable community members. We envision workforce training through the design and build of the space, specialized training to provide ongoing maintenance to tend to the native grasslands, and potential employment opportunities through our collaboration with NorCal Resist on the urban farm. Residents are eager to connect with each other and cultivate a multi-use space that strengthens the sense of community. We're also excited about this project being a model for other unused utility corridors throughout the city. There is huge support from the neighborhood, and we hope that this funding will be considered for Oki Park so that we can begin the next phase of this project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Jason Prado.
Hi, hi, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name's Jason Prado. I'm a landscape designer for Mirror Day. We're a local landscape architecture and construction office, and I've been working on the Oki Park Open Space Project for almost a year now with several local groups. Right now, the lot is vacant, underutilized, and at risk for fire, and we see the installation of the infrastructure as a way to launch the project off the ground and hopefully envision the greater goals of the project, which specifically focus on the assistance of impacted communities such as formerly incarcerated immigrants and at-risk youth. A major feature of the park design includes the restoration of native California grasslands and an urban farm. The grasslands themselves act as a major carbon sink, combat climate change, and lower the risk of fire on the vacant lot. The farm will be operated by NorCal Resist, a local nonprofit that focuses on uplifting immigrant communities. We envision the farm and the grassland to support the local neighborhood with produce, provide training for impacted communities, and act as an educational hub for local schools. We've already held three really successful community events. Our last event included working with the UC Davis Center for Community and Citizen Science to have the community partake in a Bio Blitz Day, so having the local community come out, engage with the site, and see the potential for it. So we'd like to continue that support and build this vision, and we hope that this funding will get us started as we also seek to further the funding through state means. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Andrew Nguyen.
Hello, Mayor, City Councilmembers. I'm Andrew Nguyen. I'm the executive director of the Insight Garden Program. You just heard my coworker Karen speak a little bit, so I won't necessarily repeat everything that she said. I am born and raised here in Sacramento, and I would consider myself being raised in what would be considered a resource desert, where resources are far and few in between, and I see this as part of the way of building infrastructure with the Oki Park Project in such a way that where people are being able to have their needs met, whether it's, whether it's with access to healthy foods, programming, or just being able to have connection to community, things that are needed in our, our, our city, and something that I ask that we invest in. You know, we have an infrastructure problem where people are not necessarily always supported, and this is one of the ways where we can go ahead and address marginalized and vulnerable communities within the city of Sacramento. And with that, I humbly ask for your yes vote on this budget change. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Gurdeep Dollywall.
Hi, good evening. My name is Gurdeep Dollywall. I'm with NorCal Resist. Our, our partners here have already spoken on Trevor of the project going on at Oki Park, and we're excited to work with our partners to provide, you know, a, a space for our vulnerable communities to be able to thrive in different ways, to have the, the open public garden space and urban farm, as well as a space to learn, having a teaching space for the gardening and farming as well, as, as well as having opportunities for workforce development. NorCal Resist primarily works with different immigrant communities. It's, it's focused on, is on supporting the most vulnerable communities here in Sacramento. The various ways it has done that is providing solidarity and support to undocumented immigrants, recently arrived refugees. Most recently, we provided food distribution. We do have another farm that's starting up and will be up and running soon, and so we're excited to have some initial capital improvements begin at Oki Park so that some of the other ideas that the partners have mentioned can take hold, and yeah, we're just excited to be a part of that process. We think it's a good way to provide multiple ways to support our communities as well as, as the neighboring community there. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is phone number four three six six, Mr. Davis.
Hello, yes, this is Lambert, and I'm calling regarding this budget. As I look at, at channel fourteen, you, you can't see the city council meeting live. You cannot see it while you're on the phone, and phone. And so I would personally like to see how do I get a copy of the graphs and surveys regarding this budget issue, because I'm studying city halls, surveys, and also what I had just stated, graphs. So hopefully I can receive that, because that's a disadvantage to someone who's watching it, but you can't see it because the city, the Board of County Supervisors is on at the same time you're having your meeting. So I hope that I can get a copy of what's being discussed so that I can study it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And the last hand raised is Charles West.
City Council, I'm just going to say that it's pretty disappointing that in the last two years, this council has seen fit to just adopt a status quo budget that really just lacks originality and is just doubling down on the same tired practices that have been done, which is basically in times of rising crime rates, which are largely marginal at best, and still far lower than the crime rates that we saw early on in the nineteen nineties. We spent far less on law enforcement, continuing to put tens, like hundreds of millions of dollars into this department where we, while we have critical crisis-level issues, like multiple crisis-level issues that we've been dealing with for years. Talk about, you know, the city continuously sanction sweeps that continually displace people who are unhoused and result in reckless destruction of their belongings and survival equipment, even when people opt to relocate. And these sweeps are resulting in deaths in real time. In moments of crisis such as climate-intensified weather events and disasters, the city has repeatedly failed to open cooling, warming, and clean air respite centers with adequate notice, outreach, or accommodations for people to access them. Instead, the city prioritizes spending a majority of our discretionary dollars to silence, surveil, and terrorize racial justice protesters, as is recently failed in federal court to end a lawsuit against police violence and discrimination. And you're continuing to spend not just one hundred and sixty-five million that you approved last year, but actually, the PD is getting a record-high budget of over two hundred and twenty-one million dollars in allocations this year, which is just a ridiculous amount considering the number of crises that we're having to deal with. It's disappointing, honestly, and I just can't expect.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Actually, speak louder than words, and you all just are all talk.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more hands raised.
Okay, thank you. Thank you to the members of the public for calling in. Let's begin with Mayor Protem Geta. Well, let me begin. I'm sorry, Eric, I turn this over to you, because I have one that I want to make. Mr. City Manager, we have been discussing for several weeks together and with the representative, the president of Local 522, the Sacramento, the city of Sacramento's 522, Ryan Henry, how we might work out some of the items they put forward in terms of budget requests. And so, I want to just ask you the following. Are we in agreement that once you hire a new fire chief, that we will fund an additional two captain positions, one for a PIO, and the other for the behavioral health unit of the fire department?
So, so yes, I've had great discussions with our partner at 522, Ryan Henry, and I will, in addition to the positions we're proposing tonight, I am committed to working with the new fire chief to add those two positions as to what functions they'll play. I'm going to have those conversations with the new chief to find out the appropriate staffing levels and assignments. But yes, to answer your question, yes.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. And we'll hear from sure from Mr. Henry, or we didn't hear from Mr. Henry during the public testimony, but I just wanted to get that on the record, because I think, and I appreciate you, I appreciate Mr. Henry, I appreciate the interim chief, Chief Milstein, and that we're able to get to a good place there and create some further momentum to complete the other remaining important items that we have with our, with our very important firefighters here. So, thank you. Thanks, City Manager. Okay, Councilmember Geta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was more of a question for the city manager, but before that, I also want to thank you for working on the issue with the, with the fire department on, on a couple of those positions here. And, and that will, you know, as we move forward, we kind of address those gaps and making sure that we're hitting the challenges with overtime. So I appreciate that, Mr. City Manager. The, you know, over the last couple hearings, we brought up the issue about this, this parkway and this utility space. And as you know, it's been a constant issue for the neighbors, because the weed abatement and the fires that have happened because of that always puts the neighbors at concern. You know, all of their fences are backed up to that open space. And so, being able to use that land, make it more productive, not only addresses the management of that space, but actually provides a positive asset, but amenity. Now, I think at budget and audit committee, we'd asked that, that your team look at, you know, because we know the budget's tight, we look at how can we program other dollars that we have in District Six, and then figure out how we can manage that gap so that, so that we can actually get this project off the ground. It's been going on for a while now. So, Mr. City Manager, I mean, my understanding is we found a way to reprogram some of the dollars that we had prior so that we can actually get this project moving forward?
Yes, that's correct. I'm going to have Assistant City Manager Michael Jasso chime in just a second here. I just want to be clear, we're not asking for anything as part of this budget process over and above the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that you have prioritized within your district. The balance will come from various sources that align with code enforcement and economic development. So, Mike, you want to chime in here for a sec?
Sure. No, thank you. Thank you, Howard. And that is correct. And prior to conversation earlier this afternoon, kind of council member, we have identified and based on the description of the project that we've discussed, as well as comports to the testimony that was given here today, we believe that this project fits very well in a vision of economic development and creation of economic opportunity for the residents, that it should be a project that we are able to proceed with. So, I think in discussion with your office, the next steps would be to meet with stakeholders, iron out what that agreement looks like, and manifest that, that ultimately would most likely would manifest in the form of a lease.
Thank you, Mr. Jasso. I appreciate that. And I think this might be a good example for us, because we have a lot of utility easements around the city. There are other places where, you know, the, the land is unutilized, we have to maintain it. There may be, there may be a good opportunity for us to learn about how do we better manage a lot of this open space and making more productive space for the community. So, thank you, Mr. City Manager. Again, you know, I think the sooner we can move some of those, you know, the projects moving forward, the better. I think there's a, there's a lot of need out there. And I do want to thank all of those that have called in to participate in this. Also, I know, we all know construction costs are going up, and we program certain projects, and the fact that we can actually complete the soccer fields, you can't have soccer fields without soccer goals. We understand that, you know, as, as construction changes. So, the fact that we're going to finish Mayfong Park is, is a, a lot of, a lot of kudos to our park staff for that. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and move the budget, thank all of our multiple staff. This has been a very long process and with a lot of detail and a lot of work to try to get to a budget here, and also to talk about how it's hitting a lot of our benchmarks here for supporting our youth, improving the environment, making sure we're creating economic opportunity for folks. And so, I'll move that forward, Mr. Mayor.
And Mayor Protem, does that include opening and closing the public hearing?
And I'll open and close the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, very good. Let's hear from the other members. Councilmember Harris?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I have a couple clarifying questions about the Okeecode Park project. So, reading the staff report, it sounds like you're redirecting two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from a previously approved playground in Granite Park. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Yes.
Sorry.
And then the balance of the money comes from where? Because that's not clear to me.
Mike, can you please chime in? I believe it's coming from a combination of the Innovation Growth Fund and in our Economic Development Department.
That's correct. Based on the description of the project, as I understand it, and still coming up to speed on it, we, I believe that it is likely we can use Innovation Growth Funds to support that gap.
Okay. Well, I'd like to say that, you know, generally speaking, I think it's a great use for the Okeecode Park Corridor. Of course, I have Nino's Park, which is a very similar sort of scenario up in South Matomas. I just wanted to clarify that this wasn't another special general fund ask late in the budget process.
It is not. It is not.
Well, that's great. Then I can go ahead and second Protem Gera's motion.
Good. Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thanks, Mayor. And thank you, Emily, for your presentation. I know it's probably, it's a lot, and you did it very well. And so, thank you for that. I do want to thank the staff for answering the questions on utility funding or the Utility Rate Assistance Program. Thank you, Councilmember Ving, for championing that, the arts funding. And I'm excited about the Okeecode Park Project. That sounds really cool. I have a follow-up question, City Manager, on the fire positions. I'm excited that you're saying you're going to figure out how to pay for those additional two positions, because like that, I mean, Public Information Officer or Behavioral Health, those aren't going away. So like, in the interim, they'll just keep serving those functions with captains out of the houses, and those will just be vacant positions that need to be filled?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, I definitely think that those are priorities. I mean, these folks are running into buildings and dealing with people who have been in accidents and had all sorts of traumatic experiences, and we need that Public Information Officer. So I just want to reiterate my support for you making that commitment to figure that out with the new chief, because otherwise, you know, we're just, our house is just one person down every, every day, and that's not going to work very well either. So, thank you. That was my only question, Howard. I do want to say, though, that, and this is more editorial con, that a lot of the other data I asked for got deferred to the council log specifically about Sacramento PD. I asked for information about breakdown of nine-one-one calls for service, tracking the total spending of programs and services within the department, if any, what data had been used to drive decisions, how the thirty-two million dollars we gave them last year was used, what they achieved, and more importantly, how do they define success? And if those programs, if those questions sound familiar, it's because I do believe Councilmember Harris and Councilmember Lilo, we were asking very similar questions this morning of our workforce and youth program providers. How do we define success for this department? So, I think, I mean, honestly, in my opinion, it's just good governance, and the least we expect out of our nonprofit partners is the least we should demonstrate with all of our city departments that we should be able to answer those questions. I should be able to tell people how the money was used and what it achieved. And every year for the last four years, we've given the police department significant increases in budget, giving fourteen million in twenty eighteen, fifteen million in twenty nineteen, seven million in twenty twenty, and thirty-two million last year. And now we're proposing another seventeen million. And all of that, and crime has risen. So, I ask you colleagues, what is our goal? What does success look like with this funding that we're investing? Because as I mentioned this morning, I don't blame PD for crime going up. As we heard, it's not their job to support school-aged youth and their families to avoid crises. It's not their job to find housing for people on the street who repeatedly victimized over and over and over again. Some of the advocates who are currently now, I believe, at the county hearing, fighting for money for unhoused folks and services, found a woman on Saturday night at ten PM. She had been assaulted for the sixth time in two months. And thank goodness, we were able to find her spot. But I did first go to the police captain, because I thought, goodness, at least they'll have a hotel voucher, and they were out. This is something that we should be able to have a better answer for. It's not their job to find housing for people who are looking to escape domestic violence, to provide counseling to people who are victims of violence, to break the cycle of violence. It's not their job to sit with victims of families to ensure they don't retaliate, and it's not the city's job to address the growing mental health and substance abuse crisis on their street. So, for me, and looking at data-driven approaches, there's two approaches here. You've got the one tracked, which is the county's job. And I was really honored to work with several business groups and several advocates. I sent a letter to the county last week urgently asking them to increase spaces for shelter and substance abuse services and mental health services. We asked them to increase and bring mental health response to the city of Sacramento, because we frankly can't do this without them. And there are advocates who have been sitting in the county chambers since nine AM this morning to push for those asks on behalf of our city. And I just want to thank them for that and repeat how urgent, I believe, those asks are. But on the other hand, there is a lot the city can be doing on this. We need to significantly increase our supply of housing. Our services are full of people who have no place to go. They're brimming with people who have jobs, who have income, who can't find a place to live in the city, and that falls squarely on our shoulders. And we should be investing today in the projects that will come to fruition in the next few years so that we can start to unlogjam that system and get people this ability in the housing they need. And as we heard this morning, we need to invest a lot more in programs that will support youth and their families, because that is the real key to a system's approach to violence in our community, is addressing that, the poverty, the disinvestment, the crises, the economic drivers of what we're seeing, and the social and emotional support that these families and young people need. Again, these fall squarely on our responsibility, and I think it's something that we need to do if we really want everybody in the city to thrive. So, I mean, we are looking towards a funding cliff for all of our housing and homelessness services. We've all gotten the briefings from the city manager and his team, you know, after this year, that's it. We don't have this funding anymore. And all of these amazing one-time programs that we've stood up for workforce, for restaurant and business support, for youth and family support, that's all gone after this year. It's one-time funding. You know, we might be lucky and get a ballot measure. We might be lucky and get other sources of funding, but we know now that this is a one year that we're looking out at a really different situation for our communities, for the people who desperately need our help. So prudence would dictate that we think now, data would dictate, best practices would dictate that we start now, thinking about how we shift resources into those programs so that they can be sustainable for more than just this year, but we're not doing that. And good governance should expect that I could tell people how the money is being spent in the department in our city that gets the most money of any other department. I should be able to tell them what success looks like for this additional seventeen million. I should be able to tell them what success looked like for that thirty-two million that they got last year. This is just best practices. It's what we demand of nonprofits who pay their employees less than fifty thousand dollars a year. And yeah, we demand that of them, but we are not holding ourselves to the same standard. And I personally just, I find that unacceptable. So there's a lot of good in this proposal.
I'm sorry. I'd just like to respond with regard to the police budget. So, two things. Yes, you have made that request, and we've attempted to get as many of those questions answered in time for this hearing. The balance of those questions will be answered. It's on the log. With regard to the seventeen million dollars for this year, almost one hundred percent of that is tied to contractual obligations that this council has approved already. So, and similarly in previous years, the lion's share had gone to contractual obligations. This current budget year, there are no FTEs being added. I think we covered that at Budget and Audit. We covered that in the police presentation as well. And I apologize for not being able to get all your questions answered, again, in time for this hearing, but we have not lost track of them. We will, you know, bring back those items as time permits.
Well, then I ask you, City Manager, what does success look like for the department this year? What are the metrics that we're holding ourselves accountable to for this additional money? I get that it's contractual obligations, but what I've also noticed happens here, and I wasn't planning on this dialogue, so sorry, this is going to extend a little bit, Mayor, but what I keep seeing happening here is we add in these things sort of through one-off items at council, you know, do we have permission to get this equipment? Do we have permission to add these positions? Do we have permission to go after this brand? And I get, I understand that's how that works. So, that's all building up to the need to ask for an additional seventeen million dollars so that we can pay for our contract obligation. So, I don't think it's unreasonable to ask what our metrics are for success. We should have targets for this. We should have goals that we're trying to achieve. So, do you have an answer to that question?
I'll ask Chief Lester to chime in, but we are really just trying to keep up with the man. We're trying to respond to the calls that are coming in with the staffing levels that we have right now. And honestly, again, I'll let Chief Lester chime in. It is a struggle, because we get calls from all your districts about immediate needs for police, and we can't get to all of them. And so, I mean, that's very high level, very basic. I'm not in the weeds here. I'll let Chief Lester respond, but just understand that that is the case, is that we are understaffed to deal with the volume of calls that we get now. Kathy?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, and thank you, Councilwoman Valenzuela. I know we had our initial discussions. We looked at the ongoing metrics that we have in the I know we had our initial discussions. We looked at the ongoing metrics that we have in the budget book. And you and I have had this conversation a number of times about what does that really mean? And so, when we did our budget presentation, I had each of the different offices really talk about what the Police Department does. Because I do understand, I agree, that the public needs to know where this money goes. Now, this year, the increase that you see is almost strictly for labor costs. Ninety-one percent, over ninety-one percent of our budget does go to labor. At the same time, I also would like to thank the council here for, you know, providing additional training and for the focus on de-escalation and mental health response. We continue to provide those types of services. They are an additional drain on labor. Moving forward, my intent for our department is to continue to publish more of this data, try and give the public a picture of what we do and where the city budget is going. And so, I think that there's not, from what we've seen, there's not a very robust model for this. It's sort of new territory. And we're venturing into, you know, trying to represent what we do and provide metrics. We did respond to two of the SBIs, the seven and fourteen that came over, were working on the additional data and expanding the original request that was given to us from the commission, the Police Commission, as well as your office. And we'll continue to get that data to you. But I do understand the importance, and I promise you that I'll continue to work on metrics and really try and show year-to-year comparison to see how we're doing and, you know, where these public funds are going.
I appreciate that, Chief. I, this is where I think it gets to sort of the paradigm difference that I have, which might explain some of the frustration whenever every budget year, when it comes up again and again. It's like, my definition of success, yes, I get responding to calls. Something has happened. Somebody is hurt. Something, there is an emergency. We need to respond to that. But my goal is to reduce calls for service, right? And so, that's our goal, right? Because I don't get any emails from constituents who are super psyched that they had to call nine-one-one because a crisis happened, right? Like, I get calls from people who are mad because they just had to call nine-one-one for the fifth time this week. And why aren't we doing anything to reduce the likelihood that they're going to need to call nine-one-one? And so, we get stuck in this sort of chicken and egg situation where it's like, well, we need to respond to the calls when they come. Yes, I get that. But if we don't invest in those upstream solutions more to really address that upstream crisis that is driving to that cause, then we're just continuing to increase the need to respond. And in the process, people are getting hurt, right? Things are happening that are wrong. People's had their property vandalized. They've been injured. They've been worse, right? And so, I think this is what I'm talking about when I talk about our budget. It's like, like, I don't want the metric for success here to be how many calls for service we responded to. Because if that number's going up, I don't like that. I don't like the fact that you're responding to more calls for service in my district because that means something's wrong. If someone's calling nine-one-one, and I'd like us to have a conversation and base our budgeting around what our goals are, which is similar to the presentation you gave this morning, right? Like, I want that. I want the case management. I want the violence prevention. I want the services and the pairing up with, I want all of that to happen because we know what's driving at least part of the violence we're seeing in our community. And there is really a sort of interesting moment that we're in right now as a city where I think we have an opportunity to have that conversation. And we're not having that conversation. And instead, I'm voting on another budget that's just sort of another increase and another status quo. And it's like, well, I appreciate the need to maintain. Someone's got to respond when that call nine-one-one comes. But I think we're missing the opportunity to use our resources to really achieve a goal. Because I don't want the officers in my district to keep showing up to people who are seriously injured or in crisis. I want them to be, to not need to do that, and then so to the degree that we can. So I guess that's my point here, is like, that's why I asked those questions several weeks ago. That's why I ask it every time we brief. Because I think if we had that conversation, that our budget spending would have a different array of services, and we'd have a different strategy to try to reduce that, what we're seeing in our community, which is a real crisis. That I know you know how to address, Chief, because I heard it this morning from you in that presentation. And I just want to make sure our funding actually aligns with those goals. So with all of that, I'll just say, I don't want to bring that in. I know that it was too late. I know where my colleagues stand. Y'all said so a few meetings ago, and the PD presented their budget the first time. So I'm not looking for a substitute motion or a counter motion. I'm just going to vote no. And it's added to me that, you know, folks are turning to the county for support. I know that that's important. But the people aren't calling in here because they don't see the point in having a discussion. And I think we should be welcoming these ideas, and I think we should be having this discussion now more than ever, especially as we're looking at escalating incidents on our streets. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. Let's move on to Vice Mayor Ashby and Councilmember Laloie and Councilmember Vang. I'll have a couple of closing comments.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I just want to thank City Manager Chan. Great job. I appreciate you hearing the council to on the five-two-two requests. And Mayor, thanks for carrying that torch and getting the PIO in place. And, you know, the behavioral piece is so important for these firefighters. I've dealt with so much trauma, especially over the last couple of years and everything they've seen. Really proud of, proud of that work and proud that you two were able to resolve that good. I'm very happy about that. And then, City Manager Chan, I want to ask you for something here. This one's really important. And I think the timing's really important, and it's so little money that, please, please, just tell me, yes, please. It's not going to cost us more than fifty thousand dollars. Please, please, put Susan B. Anthony's tennis courts in this budget so we can get it done this year. Please, it's only fifty thousand. And I've been out there, and I know Councilmember Jennings and Councilmember Vang and Councilmember Gera will agree with me that they have no other park. There's nothing else we can do for them for like miles. There's nowhere else for them to go, and these guys did such a good job of opening those gates so that people in that community could have a park. But a fourth of that park is unusable because it's unmaintained tennis courts. So, please, I am begging you, let us work with Sacri Public. Here's the thing I know, learned over twelve years. I know best of intentions that we'll come back to it and we'll work on it and we'll get money, but the cost is going to escalate. And right now, we've got it under fifty. Please, City Manager, tell me we can put this in this budget today. Please.
Vice Mayor, this is already in the works, and it's less of a funding issue than kind of a jurisdictional issue. Staff is already working on it. And we're going to make it happen. Not sure how that's going to happen, but I know that our staff.
Just really quick, it was a jurisdictional issue, but that has been resolved.
If it's resolved, we can solve it without adding anything to the budget. That's my.
Okay, very good. So, just for my own, I won't be here in seven months. City Manager, tell me that I can stand out there with Councilmember Vang before the end of this year and see progress happening on those courts. Is that going to happen?
I would never to do that. I just don't know what all is involved.
Okay, but the money will be allocated, right? It's not that much, and it's so many kids.
He's going to figure out a way to do it, and I get to play the first match, okay?
Can you do that, Mayor? I know you're very good at tennis, but can you play pickle? Oh, wait, it's not even pickleball. It's actually footsaw. Okay. Okay, really important to me, after seeing all those kids and the real lack of services of that one particular site, it really stands out across the whole city for having the least recreational resources, which is why I'm pushing so hard. Thanks for letting me push you.
Thank you. Councilmember Vang.
Thanks. Vice Mayor beat me to the button. So here she is advocating for District Eight. So, but I can't, you know, I'm not going to fight against that. I think it's great when a colleague is fighting for my district. Councilmember Jennings is clapping as well. So, Vice Mayor, just thank you so much for your steadfast advocacy for South Sacramento. And really looking forward to working with our city manager to make sure that we make that happen. You're absolutely right. That neighborhood is one way in, one way out, and there is no park. And when we talk about reducing violence, it's really about activating and creating green spaces, back to basic of what the city does, right? And so, really looking forward to make sure that we make that become a reality. Just want to take this moment to thank city staff for their hard work, Emily, on this budget. And, you know, I have, I'm still struggling with this budget. And a big part of that is really the increase in police funding. But I do understand that it is contractual, that we have already approved that. I am going to vote yes on this budget, but would like to make an ask, City Manager, is that before mid-year budget comes again? Because Councilwoman Valenzuela did ask for that data. I think we're very hard on our nonprofits and other community-based organization. I hear from my colleagues on this virtual dais that we want to see metrics, but hardly do I ever hear the ask for metrics from PD. And so, I think that we need to be very fair in how we ask for metrics. And I would like to make a request. I know it's on the log, but we need to see that data before mid-year comes. So you have a few months to get that data to us before we make a decision around mid-year and next year. We shouldn't even wait that long. And so, I want to make sure, I will vote yes, knowing that that data needs to come back, that those metrics needs to come back. The metrics that Councilwoman Valenzuela asked. So that as we move forward with future budgets, we have the data in front of us to inform us if we are investing the dollars in a way that is truly improving public safety, right? I think that's what, that's what our constituent wants. That's what all my colleagues want. And so, I too want to see that data. But again, I will be voting for this budget because I know that while there's an increase in PD that is contractual, it's our labor contracts, and we've already approved that. But it's really important that we see that data, that we share that with the community. And so, I think that's it. Just one last thing. I do, I do want to thank city staff for really just the great work around the SIR program. I know on the Water Committee, Councilwoman Valenzuela and I really fought hard to make sure that we kept this program alive because many of our low-income families really depend on this program. And just really want to thank city staff for making sure that we were able to, to work through that and have the program continue. So, that's it, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Shanir.
You're on mute, Jay.
Thank you. Sorry. Let me, let me start by saying I have no ask. I do appreciate the two hundred and fifty thousand to square off the ride pre-RT. And Emily, they're already surpassed pre-COVID numbers on ridership, so young people are using it quite a bit. I just want to thank a number of budget directors, going back to Laney and then Don Holmes and Emily. This is my twelfth budget, along with Angelique. You know, we've had some really good ones. We've had some really hard ones. But I know how hard staff works to put these things together. This is not an overnight sensation that all of a sudden we have a budget book. So I just want to recognize, and I know the staff goes beyond Emily to all the folks that she works with and within the departments, putting their own budgets together, that all going to the city manager and how it gets distilled out. And thank Howard, because there's a lot of people that he has to say no to, which is not an easy thing. But just want to relay my appreciation for all the work that's done to help keep the city running on that, on that course. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Harris?
Yeah, just briefly, Mayor, listening to the discussion tonight. I just want to say, y'all know I'm not going to be here for the next mid-year negotiation. And if there's any carryover, listening to last-minute pleadings about park projects, and, you know, Oakie Park and Footsaw, look, if parks are your priorities, vote for it at mid-year. Take some of that carryover and put it towards parks. Just get it done so that you don't have to haggle at the last minute in the tight budget. If that's where your priority is, vote for it. You had an opportunity this last mid-year and you walked away. So, you know, just do it. I totally agree that our parks need a lot of upkeep, a lot more money. And it is really clear that well-maintained park system is exactly what we need to do to keep our youth occupied and keep them in a healthy place and a healthy space. And it meets all the goals that we've talked about all day long. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Harris. So, I, this is my twenty-fifth budget. I include the state legislative budgets. And I guess over time, I've kind of, I kind of have come to a compromise. But I think a sound approach to the way I look at these things. I don't think you can look at, I don't think, I can't look at a single budget in isolation. You know, there's an old concept called zero-based budgeting. It was popularized in the nineteen seventies by President Jimmy Carter. And the idea was, and actually, it sounds really good in, in terms of its concept, that you start any budget from zero. I mean, literally zero, and you build it from zero, which means you make original choices about what you want to prioritize, in what amounts, in what percentages. And when I hear Councilmember Valenzuela, for example, very passionately and sincerely talk about the priorities of our city, I wish that, in a way, we were starting from zero and that we could have those original discussions. But what I've learned about budgets is that there is already a significant amount that is baked into where you start from, most of it frankly by law and by history and precedent. And we can change anything we want, as Howard and anybody else says. Five votes on any given day or any given night. But the way that I choose to look at these budgets is what is the trend and what is the arc? And I've said this a lot, and I'm going to keep saying it, that you can look at some of the contractual increases for police and fire and also for all of our employees and recognize that a huge percentage of the overall city budget is our, is our workforce, our labor costs. But I'm going to say this tomorrow, so I give you a little preview again, that since we passed that additional second-half cent of Measure U in two thousand and eighteen, we have put a hundred and seventy million dollars over the last three and a half years above what we were spending directly into the community. So, what is the trend and what is the arc? And that doesn't include, by the way, the coronavirus relief money, both CARES money and the ARP money. So, so long as the trend continues to show real balance between funding the essential functions of running a city, including public safety, if that is balanced with continuing a very assertive approach to investing real resources in our community, especially into our disadvantaged communities and neighborhoods, then I'm going to continue to run the budgets. Because the real fight here is when we, it's a good fight, is when we do have extra money, which we've had most every time since I became mayor. This was really one of the first times we have not. We are consistently making choices, I think, that reflect that balance with a slight bias to investing more in our communities and in our neighborhoods, around everything that we know is important to the quality of life, from affordable housing, yes, to alleviating homelessness, yes, to youth, yes, to the creative economy, yes, to small businesses, our commercial corridors, you name it. So I want to keep going in that direction. This year, of course, our budget, we had no surplus. And so, we we maintain balance, which I'm proud of. God, we just went through a goddamn pandemic. So it's not perfect, but we're not building a budget from zero. And maybe we should, but we're not. And I want to look at the arc. And I think the arc is heading in the right direction and with the right kind of balance. So, I say thank you. The manager, the team, my colleagues, every budget argument and fight is a good one. Because it's a, because it's a fight about values. And that's what we should be, not even a fight, that's what we should be arguing about in the way we do. So, thank you. Let's call the roll.
Vice Mayor Ashby?
Yes, and thank you, staff, for your hard work.
Councilmember Laloie?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
No.
Councilmember Shanir?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Gera?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Can I just get clarification, Mayor, really quick, from my direction, ensuring that we receive data regarding?
That's part of the motion.
Thank you. My vote is yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes, okay. Members, that completes the budget, but we'll be back mid-year before you know it. Not before, so. Are there council ideas and questions on items not on the agenda? Councilmembers Shanir and Harris?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few announcements. McClatchy Park and Mangan Park School pools are officially opening this weekend. And my office will pay all of the pool admissions, so if people. And my office will pay all of the pool admissions. So if people want to come, it's free. I want to thank the Yipsey Aquatic staff for getting both pools, especially Mangan, which had a lot of repair work ready for the summer. So Mangan Pool will be open three to seven on Friday and one to five on Saturday. On Saturday, we've got local five-two-two, our firefighters grilling hot dogs. With free sunscreen, beach balls, and more. Pool admission, as I said, will be free every Friday night, uh, courtesy of our district. And McClatchy Pool will be open this Saturday from one to five. We're also doing free family pool nights on Mondays at McClatchy from three to seven, and that's all on our website. Southland Park Neighborhood Association, my office and Councilmember Jennings' office. Are hosting a community cleanup of the Del Rio Trail area this Saturday, uh, at nine AM. Meet at the trail entrance on Fourteenth Street and Southland Park Drive. We'll have all the gear and free I love or I heart the Del Rio Trail t-shirts while supplies last. And then finally, on Saturday, June eighteenth, we're celebrating Juneteenth at Forty Acres. St. Hope is closing the streets down. With art, music, food, and entertainment for the whole family from five, four to nine PM. Um, lastly, uh, the farmer's market in Oak Park is now open on Sundays. Uh, from nine to one, lots of family activities, local vendors, and fresh produce. Again, all of that will be on the District Five website. We hope, uh, you all can come.
Thank you, Councilmember Shanir. Councilmember Harris?
Yeah, thanks again, Mayor. Well, I'm super excited. This is the weekend Pops in the Park kicks off on the eighteenth. It's been two years since we've been able to have a Pops concert in person. I I expect a tremendous crowd out there. We've got a dynamic band, and I know that, uh. Certainly, the community has been looking forward to this for a long time. I want to thank my staff. For working really hard to produce this event. It is a tremendous amount of work, uh, because it's a really big concert. And I hope you all can make little s- space in your calendar and come on up and join us. Uh, look forward to it. There will be a another vaccination clinic at Stanford Settlement tomorrow from ten AM to four PM. Information at Stanford Settlement dot org. And lastly, another thing to be very proud of, we are just completing the first public mural in Northgate. And, um, it's really beautiful. It's at Northgate and Peralta. It's a an image of, um. Dancers that is a very descriptive of the Latino community. It's very vibrant. Uh, my thanks to Beth Rubel and her crew for bringing this to fruition. And, uh, we're going to celebrate that. The a grand opening of the mural probably around June twenty-sixth or so. We haven't. Settled on the date, but I'll make sure to announce it, and hopefully you can come out. If you drive up Northgate, you can't miss it. It'll be right in your face, and I think it'll bring a smile. So, um, haven't you, if you get a chance, just drive up Northgate and have a look. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just want to, um, stop for a minute and thank. The twenty-five young people from their key clubs and their prospective schools. Who came to Portuguese Park this past Saturday. And they spent over eight hours painting all the different, um. Benches and trestles and just. Memorials and everything that's in that park just did an incredible job of beautifying it. They wouldn't stop till the job got done. And I've just really appreciated their effort and their resilience and their determination to make this park something that they could all be proud of. So I just wanted to. Acknowledge them, uh, and thank them for their effort. I also wanted to let everybody know that in addition to the Juneteenth that was mentioned by Councilmember Shanir. Uh, Juneteenth is happening this entire weekend. Gospel Under the Stars, the Juneteenth Ga- Gospel Under the Stars will take place. On Friday night at six PM at the William Land Park. And then the following day on Saturday at William Land Park will be the Sacramento Juneteenth Festival. That will start from eleven AM and go all the way until, uh. Six or seven in the evening. So another wonderful day of food and fellowship. And lots of different activities that are going on. So this is going to be, our city will be thriving this this weekend. With Juneteenth events, and I encourage the entire community to come out in support of this wonderful holiday. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilmember. Councilmember Vang?
Yeah, lots of great activities happening this summer. Uh, as you all know, summer is here, um, but we also know that during summertime. Um, you know, our summer is getting hotter and longer, right? And we have human caused climate change that directs. Uh, that directly impacts, um, our, uh, public health of the community. Um, and so I just wanted to put out there that there are several things that we all can do. Uh, to make collective change to address climate change, and that's one, you know, planting, uh, free shade trees. You can get that from Smud and the Tree Foundation. And the other part is cutting down your food waste. And so, um, I just wanted to share, um, as a councilwoman, but really want to. Give a shout out to our public works and our city staff is that, um, our city is officially launching a new organics recycling program that's going to help turn food waste. Into a nutrient-dense compost. So starting July first next month. All food scraps, right? All your yard trimmings got to be together in one bin. It's really basic, right? But I was walking with our seniors this Monday because I do Mondays with my with our seniors. And they picked up, um, the container at the Pennell Community Center, and I actually have one right here because I picked mine up too. And so. Just wanted to encourage people to do that. Um, so again, starting July first in the city of Sacramento, you y'all got to put your food scraps. With your yard trimmings in one container, and you can keep track of that by picking up your bucket. Um, I just want to say thank you to staff that's really implementing this. They're really, um, they got a lot of heart and hustle. They're out at seven community centers. So. You can go to SACorganics.org if you're watching this, uh, city council meeting. Um, and really just register to pick up your, um, container, right? And that's one thing that you can do. I know our seniors picked up their buckets. At the Pennell Community Centers, just want to give a shout out to city staff. Back to basic, everybody, go get your bucket. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. Uh, Vice Mayor Ashby?
I don't think I can follow that, Mayor. Definitely after you get your bucket, there are some other things you can do in the city of Sacramento. Uh, Mayor, this weekend on Friday, we will start our movies in the park as well in the Tomas at the Regional Park. Always a good time. We're going to kick off with Clifford the Big Red Dog, which is. Such a fun movie. If you haven't seen it, it's great. You can come out and join us. We just start at sunset. So and then we give out free popcorn and waters and stuff like that. So. Uh, would love to have everybody out there. And then we have our farmer's market on Saturdays. Every Saturday in the regional park from eight until noon, and we have free yoga. In the regional park also at nine o'clock every Saturday. And, uh, Mayor, also just want to wish you good luck tomorrow with your state of the city. Address will be happy to be there cheering for you and, uh, listening to your. Your ideas and strategies for the coming year.
Thank you so much. Yes, you're all, everybody is invited and, uh. I I hope, uh, that you will come out, share some honest thoughts and, uh. And some exciting initiatives and, uh, and provide some hope. I look forward to it. Thank you. Members, let's now hear from any members of the public who want to testify on items not on the agenda. Uh, we have three speakers, Madam Clerk.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I have a board and commission appointment to read into the record to the Sacramento Youth Commission. Jade Melody Marin and Lilian Grace Miller Segura.
Thank you.
And then, um, our first speaker is Yasenia Landa.
Hi, my name is Yasenia Landa. I am a resident of Garden Valley, but most importantly, I am a mother of four. Who attend Garden Valley Elementary, which is twenty feet across from the proposed homeless shelter. Jeff Harris is taking advantage of the uninformed and unserviced community. Recent events shows that our student safety should be our priority. Why are we, or should I say you, willing to risk the lives of our brown, black, and Asian children? Having a center that will be heavily trafficked and unidentified. And untraceable adults around our children's with possible criminal backgrounds. The fact is. The fact is that this is not being made public. And not informing our residents and our community says a lot. No one has asked our community what we need, and this is what we need. We need a park. We need a community center. We need a library. We need a garden. We need an aquatic center. Most importantly, we need. Input on what goes into our community. This or any shelter does not belong in an elementary school. This would never happen in a white neighborhood. Go to any elementary school and tell them that you want to build a homeless shelter in front of their school and see what the response is. District three, you are failing me. You are failing my children. You are failing the community for letting it get this far. Building the shelter, build the shelter, just not in front of my children's school or any school. I love the fact that you all supported to protect the healthcare workers and their patients. Now I'm asking you guys. To support my children, our community, and the teachers. I hope that our next city council meeting, you guys here for my four, five, nine, and eleven-year-old children. Thanking you guys for standing up for them and for our community.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Lambert Davis.
Oh, yes, this is Lambert Davis, uh, to the Bay and Back Cheesecakes in Del Paso Heights. And I want the mayor and city councilman Laloe to really listen to what I'm getting ready to say. And hopefully the rest of the, uh, city council as well. Yesterday, we buried an iconic figure in Del Paso Heights. Her name is, was Mrs. Edna Brown. She was one hundred and eight years young. And not only that, but I remember her from elementary school all the way till today. I attended her funeral. What a wonderful person she was. Her husband was a wonderful person, Mr. Brown Senior. And these are the type of people that inspired me when I was growing up. That's why I challenge injustice when I see it. Because they came from Louisiana, the deep south. Where they had to deal with white only and colored only. Practices which sometimes I see being implemented at City Hall, and that's why I challenged them. I think. Tonight's meeting, as a matter of fact, I sent a copy of the obituary to Mayor Steinberg's staff. And also Mr. Laloe's staff. And, uh, hopefully you will research it. And adjourn in her honor. In her memory because a hundred and eight years young. You're not going to see very many people live that long, and she did it with dignity. You can never hear a negative word about that wonderful human being. And she was in Del Paso Heights, I would believe, over sixty years, maybe seventy years. Mrs. Edna Brown. And Mayor, I heard from some people that you may be featuring the Grant Drumline during your address. So. Shout out to you for being sincere about the youth, and thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is.
I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, I, and I did not know Ms. Brown, I don't think, but a hundred and eight years old. Um, I think it would be appropriate to adjourn, um, in her memory. Um, and I'd be happy to do that tonight, all right? Thank you.
Next speaker is Letty Huerta.
Good evening. My name is Letitia Huerta. I am a resident of District Three for twenty-three years. I was a full-time volunteer at four schools in Twin Rivers District. Regency Park, Maury Avenue, Noralto Elementary School, and Garden Valley. Our representative Jeff Harris tells his empathy for the community. And accused members of the Garden Valley community of not having empathy for determining. Ill homeless people that Joshua's House Hospice is purporting to serve. Of course, we are people who feel empathy and care about most fragile. Only we are sure that in front of a primary or elementary school is not the right place for this type of project. Mr. Harris, we must also empathize with our children studying at home in our district. They deserve to have a park, a bookstore, a community center, library, and not hospice. Mrs. Marlene, founder of Joshua's House Hospice, in June first meeting. Mentioned that she was interested in being a good neighbor and listening to our community. In this case, the Garden Valley School and its surroundings. However, this was not the case since the only two committee meetings about this proposal. Parents at our Garden Valley School showed their opposition to this project. This is recorded by Mr. Harris, if you want to check. And a week later, after the June first meeting, they have a private groundbreaking for Joshua's House Hospice. Of course, that is not listening to the community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Noi.
Hi, my name is Noi. I'm a residential at Beachwood. Um. Near Garden Valley. So to me, I don't think it's really safe. It's not safe. To build a homeless shelter right in front of Garden Valley. I got kids that go there. Um, not, not, it's not safe for the, the children, uh, the staff. Um, I'm a contract, a subcontractor for Twin River. School District. I know for a fact. I I work a swing shift. I know it's not safe. For for myself to work night shift with homeless homeless shelter right in front of it. So with that said, I'm, I'm one hundred percent. Oppose this project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Chris Palomo.
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. I'd first like to thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Chris Palomo, and I'm a field representative for the NorCal Carpenters Union at a local forty-six here in Sacramento. I'm calling in to ask some questions about our local construction projects that are going on and future projects here in Sacramento. We've all seen the devastating effects this recent pandemic has brought to our communities. One thing it has shown us is just how important healthcare is. I would like to know what you guys are doing in the future to make sure that the hardworking men and women. Who build these local construction projects are provided healthcare. There are a lot of irresponsible contractors currently building projects here in Sacramento. Who do not provide their workers healthcare and pay them such a low wage that they can barely make ends meet, let alone pay for their own healthcare. We need to do better here in Sacramento and hold these contractors accountable. I know we have a housing, uh, crisis here on a homeless issue, and when you're not paying, when the, these workers aren't getting paid the, you know, the, a livable wage. They can't even afford to live in the houses they're building. Projects with no commitments or contractor requirements just add to the downward pressure on our community and the workers who build it. What you allow is what will continue to happen. So the next time a project comes before this council. I'd like you to please think of those hardworking men and women who are out there working in the rain and shine to bring these projects to fruition. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is David Marvelli.
Uh, good evening. I'm not here to debate the hospice, proposed hospice across the street from Garden Valley Elementary School. Rather to discuss the communication or lack thereof from our council. Um, the, as as stated before, I believe there were two meetings, uh, public meetings, both held in only English. Um, no, no translators. The first one was, hey, this is the proposal. We're thinking about it. And the second one was. Hey, we're done with this, and here's some design, uh, or it's time for us to talk about design, which really couldn't be discussed because it was the first opportunity many people even had to. Voice their opinion on on what should go there. Um, uh, but and then before I go further to into the, uh, communication piece, I just want to say. Wow, tremendous, uh, Congressperson Valenzuela, um, having metrics and goals that that city can actually be held accountable to. Uh, that's amazing. Uh, I I would love to hear stuff like that from my council member. Um, while he's taking potshots at other council members for begging and pleading for a tennis court for their constituents. Um, who not only just begs and pleads at at late budget sessions, but also has a proven track record of building aquatic centers. Community centers, fire stations for her community, uh, has the support from the firefighters and the police union. I see why. It's also why she has my my support and will continue to have my support. Um, our neighborhood has been asking, we're used to not being listened to. We've been asking for a park for thirty years. Uh, Mayor Steinberg, you mentioned that you would love to start from a budget from scratch. How long have you been mayor now? You're making improvements on budgets that have, that you've created, but we continue to not build services to stop the homeless epidemic. It's the chicken egg thing. You you're trying to keep up with something that clearly is not working. It's insanity. We're doing the same thing over and over and not having better results. Homelessness is getting worse, not better. We need programs, mental services, health. We need a park. Mayor Steinberg, I would love to challenge you on the tennis court at patio in Northgate. Or or maybe we could shoot some hoops, or how about I buy you a beer at the mobile, at the mobile food truck park that we don't have? How about I'd love to go to the concert.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes, absolutely. I would love to go to the concert in the park with you and enjoy a beer. We don't have any of those services. Our.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Raoul Huerta Castro.
Good evening. I'm here as president of South Natomas United, a neighborhood association in South Natomas. In twenty nineteen, Councilmember Harris proposed a homeless shelter in our South Natomas neighborhood directly in front of Garden Valley Elementary School. Our community overwhelmingly opposed this proposal due to safety concerns for our children and our community. Fortunately, we were able to stop that proposal. Councilmember Harris was told on numerous occasions that our low-resourced, primarily minority community needs parks, community centers, libraries, things of that nature for our community and especially for our children to grow. Yet Councilmember Harris has now pushed another homeless housing project called Joshua's House at the same location. A complete disregard for our community needs and safety. Worse, community outreach has been lacking with most of our neighbors unaware of this proposal and the fact that it's already in design review. Only the second community meeting specifically about this proposal was held two weeks ago. The first one held over a year ago, where again, our community overwhelmingly disapproved of the project's location. Yet a private groundbreaking was held last week and people from our community were never informed and denied entry. Gates were placed at the location and security guard posted to keep people out. Our community deserves respect and to be listened to, something that clearly has not happened. This proposal was also originally sold to you as a hospice facility. Now it's supportive transitional housing with volunteer hospice services. So what is it? We urge the council to acknowledge the mistreatment of our community and put a hold on this project until meaningful community outreach is completed. The community needs to be taken seriously. Lastly, more than one hundred e-commerce have been submitted by our community with overwhelming opposition to Joshua's House placement in front of Garden Valley Elementary School.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
I urge the council to read all of those e-commerce from people that were not able to be connected to the virtual meeting.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Keon Bliss.
Hi, city council members. I am Keon Bliss, Vice Chair of the, your charter mandated Sacramento Community Police Review Commission. And want to give you a quick clap for approving and verifying that your number one single most priority with our county tax, or our city dollars is on Sacramento Police Department. And I'm just wondering, now that we've approved this record-setting budget, when will be the next time this council hears to review the first set of recommendations that our council, that our commission gave back in twenty twenty? The last time, if you all remember, we're hearing this group one out of forty-six more recommendations that are still waiting on your desks was March twenty twenty, or March twenty-two of this year. And that, we were told that we were expecting it to be coming back up by April based on council members requesting and comments on it. But here we are in almost, in mid-June, and we still have yet to actually see those recommendations brought back before you. So I'm just curious, City Manager Howard Chan, when are we going to see the next set of recommendations up? And if we're going to actually get to group two of the, of the other thirty-nine recommendations that are still waiting for this council to review? Just wanted to know if I can expect an exact date on that. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker is Marbella Sala.
Yes, hi, thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor and Councilwoman Harris for your support of Joshua's House. I can appreciate this is a very difficult issue. And as you can tell by some of the comments, misguided, misinformed comments that you've heard, I want to tell you as president of GNNA that we emphatically and without any reservation support Joshua's House. It is, despite what others believe, it is going to be a place where, a place of refuge for those that are at the end of their life to, for their, to land and receive care. We also believe GNNA and our community, which is more than a hundred people, believe that is our moral and ethical responsibility to care for each other despite one situation. And Joshua's House, again, as I said, it's a place for those that are at the end of their life to receive care. A week ago, I was reminded by someone that said, we all must remember that these individuals were at one time someone's little miracle. And I was very moved by that. And so having Joshua's House in our neighborhood where we can, we can say these fifteen individuals, someone cares for you. We remember that you were someone's little miracle is of, is of great importance and defines us as a community. Addition, additionally, despite what they're saying, having Joshua's House on Northgate will bring economic development because you will have medical staff, you'll have visitors, people from throughout the state looking towards us to understand what, as a community, we are doing to care for those that are most deserving of this type of care. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. And Mayor, we have no more speakers, but before we adjourn, I'd like to thank Angel Anguiano from our planning department who is online tonight anticipating we may need translation services.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris wanted to speak on council ideas and questions about some of the public testimony here. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, generally we don't comment on comments not on the agenda. But I just want to set the record straight here about community outreach around Joshua's House. It has been ongoing for over a year. We have had two targeted community meetings where we invited everybody, all the community associations in the area. And then, of course, I've gone to the community associations and talked about Joshua's House for the last year. This council discussed Joshua's House. It was adopted by the council, put in the homeless master siting plan. You know, this is a very benign project that will cause no harm to the neighborhood. I just want to set the record straight. You know, people said we need parks, we need libraries. Within a short distance of this exact area, we have one of the best libraries and community centers in the city. We built a brand new park, Oak Brook Park, just a few blocks away. We've rehabbed Gardenland Park in a very significant way and made it a great community asset. We rebuilt Bannon Creek Park. And we got, thanks to this council, seven million dollars to improve the Northgate corridor for safety, for beautification. You know, I, I appreciate people's sentiments about this. And of course, as you all know, people object to any project if the word homeless is associated with it. We've all been there. We've all taken those community meetings. They're not easy. But I just want to make it clear that this project was passed with a notice of decision from the planning department yesterday. And I feel very confident that our public outreach has been robust and open to all. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. Okay. Is there, just can I ask one, one question? I know it's not on the agenda. Is there, are you working on any kind of a good neighbor policy with, with the community or does that go with this?
Yes, absolutely. Marlene Fitzwater is working on it. And, you know, I, I'm willing to go back out to the community to discuss, you know, design details and so forth. The fact of the matter is, there are people who just simply are fearful of this project. Think that it will cause a lack of safety in their neighborhood. I believe that they're sadly mistaken and that there are people who are, are really spreading fear in the community. This is a great project. You've supported it.
I do.
I think it'll be a wonderful thing for the community, or I wouldn't have supported it.
Wait, I'll just say one last thing in your defense here. You know, with that good neighbor policy, which I know you were working on, Marlene, as we're getting, we have to just keep saying yes. We have to. The need is too great because if we don't say yes, then we're going to continue to see all the suffering that we see on our streets. So thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, members, if there's nothing else to come before the city council, thank you for a good, long, productive day. Hope to see you tomorrow morning at the State of the City. Good work, everyone, and we are adjourned.
Mayor? Mayor? Wait, did you, did you want to adjourn in gen, in memory of?
Oh, of course. Thank you. I want to adjourn in memory of Edna Brown. A hundred and eight years old, lived in Del Paso Heights for sixty years. Who passed away. May her memory be a blessing. We are adjourned. Thank you.